All right. I am going to call this meeting to order. Para traducción en español, por favor escanea el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, Lord, we just thank you once again for this opportunity to be in these chambers tonight. Father, I, uh, we don't take for granted this platform, this opportunity as a community that, Lord, we're able to share our concerns. God, we have a, a city council, a mayor, Lord, our city staff that's working on our behalf. I just, I thank you for the energy that's in the room, the unity, our commitment to being stronger together. We're just asking for help, Lord, and wisdom tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Great. Real call, please.
Councilmember Ribe?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
There are no agenda changes. Any council, authority members, staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we have a few presentations. So first, we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. If I could invite Jeanette Reyes up front. All right. Today is a really important day. This whole month is a really important month. As a city, we're proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month. We're celebrating not only the present, but the past and the history of our Hispanic and Latino communities and the contributions that they've given us. Today, we're giving you the proclamation for this year, and we want to thank you for everything you've done. So I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Riverbank is committed to continuing to build a welcoming and neighborly community, embracing diversity and fostering equity for every resident. Whereas Latinos and Hispanics have enriched the Riverbank community and play a vital role in Riverbank's economy and workforce with cultural, educational, and political influences. Whereas residents of Latino Hispanic origin make up fifty-seven percent of the city's population, making it the largest race or ethnic minoritized group in the city. Whereas Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the vibrant traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to Mexico, Central America, Caribbean Islands, South America, and Spain. Whereas the Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city through the strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. Rest today, we honor you, Jeanette Reyes, for your dedication to empowering young people in the community. You embody the values of service, vision, and collaboration. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council, the city of Riverbank hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month and invite all to celebrate the contributions that have been made to our city and our community by Hispanic Americans. Thank you. And if you could share a little bit about the work you're doing and your history with Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, and community. My name is Jeanette Reyes Garnica. I'm a lifelong resident of Riverbank. I prepared something kind of brief that I wanted to touch upon. So I am a proud first-generation college grad, a product of Riverbank and the Riverbank Unified School District, the daughter of Mexican migrants. And my work lies specifically in empowering and uplifting youth, especially in my community. My family, like many others, built their lives in the city with resilience, hard work, and hope. That is why this moment is not just personal, but it's deeply collective. Tonight, I must speak honestly. After the past couple months, and especially after the Supreme Court backed the aggressive power to stop and detain anyone simply for looking Hispanic or speaking Spanish in Los Angeles, which, let's be honest, is racial profiling, um, has not become, but rather has been, the reality of many in our community. This proclamation cannot just be symbolic. It must be, it must remind us to use our voices and defend our rights. And so I want to take this opportunity to share something directly with my community in the language that many of us learned at home. Usted tiene derechos constitucionales. No abra la puerta si un agente de migración está tocando la puerta. No conteste ninguna pregunta de un agente de emigración. Usted tiene el derecho a guardar silencio. No firme nada sin antes hablar con un abogado. Usted tiene el derecho de hablar con un abogado. Si usted está fuera de su casa, pregúntele a la gente si tiene la libertad de irse. Si le dice que sí, vaya con tranquilidad. Entreguele esta tarjeta a la gente. Si usted está dentro de su casa, muestre la tarjeta por la ventana o pásela debajo de la puerta. These rights belong to you. Do not forget them. This proclamation is not the end of the story. It is an invitation, an invitation to keep standing together, to protect one another, and to ensure Riverbank remains a city where all families, regardless of where they come from, can feel safe and valued. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for this recognition. I accept it not only for myself, but for every family who has ever felt unseen, unheard, or unprotected. Together, we will keep moving forward. Thank you.
If, if the council can come down, we're going to take a photo together. All right. We have a presentation from KSN regarding the Riverbank Regional Recycled Wastewater Project Plant.
Mayor and council, tonight we have Neil Colwell with KSN, who is the project manager with regards to this specific project and is here with an update.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, we'd like to spend a little bit of time going through, have a deeper dive into the history of the, the regional recycle water project, providing you some of that background in terms of how the project developed, some initial concepts, going into the, the, the processes that we use in terms of evaluating alternatives and coming up to the recommended project that we have right now that, that we're, we're developing. Touch on the status of the project in terms of the budget, some of the challenges that we still have with funding the project in terms of, of, uh, loan and grant opportunities, and then talk through some processes that we're recommending for the sixty, going from the sixty to ninety percent design to really look at kind of the matching of the facility, its components, value engineering, phasing, budgets, and then matching those up with an affordable project in the end. So I'll spend some time here and go through that. Uh, starting off, just, just going to, to kind of early history of, of the concept, going back into mid-two thousand fifteen. I'm kind of going to present this a little bit from, from my perspective in terms of the, the service support I was providing to the city through some of these concept developments here. In, in mid-two thousand fifteen, your, your Director Public Works, Marco Riddell, reached out to me to, asked me to evaluate at a very broad, kind of a back-of-the-envelope level, basis what the opportunities might be for recycle water development within the city of, of Riverbank. Part of that, that background, I understand, at, at that time, Mayor O'Brien was also, has some interest in, in exploring this, this opportunity. Some context to give, give during this period in twenty, mid-two thousand fifteen, the, the, the whole California was really coming out of an extensive, and then still in the middle of an extensive drought period. The city was under certain pressures at that time regarding its water use. We were seeing some, some declines in groundwater levels in the city's wells. So there was some, some impetus behind looking at the recycle water project as a, as an ability to do something different with that, that resource. And so that's, that's an underlying kind of theme that, that came forward starting in two thousand fifteen and has continued to be part of the, the project as, as we've advanced it at this point. And at, at this level, again, mid-two thousand fifteen, very broad level, what could be done? What, what are the opportunities for recycle water use? What might be the drivers of the, the reasons for the city to, to look at recycle water? And are there partners that might be part of a, of a program? A little sketch here, one of the early ideas of, of, of whether or not there could be a partnership with some of the, the local entities such as Escalon, maybe, uh, City of Oakdale with maybe a joint concept with the City of Riverbank to be able to produce something regional. So this is how some of the regional aspects of this started to come, come forward. We looked at potential for partnership with other, other entities such as Oakdale Irrigation District, South San Joaquin Irrigation District, MID, Modesto Irrigation District, as well as, as, um, the growers in, in the area also. Overall, kind of this concept sort of, it got big because we're, we're kind of looking, looking big at that point, what, what could this look like? And came up with about seven million gallons per day of, of potentially available water that could be part of a regional program. So that was a, it's kind of a, a big picture, maybe not really implementable. And so there was some right sizing that started to happen, happen there. This is one of the exhibits that came out of that really early assessment analysis, just looking at agricultural lands along this corridor here of the Stanislaus River. So again, coming back to the groundwater component of this, we really started off focusing along the Stanislaus River to, to find opportunities for benefits to the local groundwater basins, whether or not it's East or San Joaquin groundwater basin or the, um, the Stanislaus groundwater basin. And so again, at a, at a big picture level, are there opportunities for recycle water users to exist that might be able to match up with an available recycle water source? And we were thinking that that could be on the order of seven million gallons per day if it was kind of a, a big, you know, a big picture there. So, you know, lots of lands available, lots, lots of irrigation, you know, crops being irrigated in this area that could, could receive recycled water. So, so again, is there, is there potential from a broad perspective? And, and the initial answers were yes, this is something that, that you could, could look at further. There were some informal outreach that was done by city staff. I wasn't involved in that to, to, to gauge some interest. But, but overall, this, this back-of-the-envelope process ultimately led to developing a scope of, of a project, a scope of a, of a study really, that was part of the application for grant funding for the recycle water planning study. Again, that, that scoping really focused on opportunities along the, the Stanislaus River corridor, continuing to look at potential for partnership with Oakdale Escalon, mainly SSGID is, was one of the, the key partners there that we identified as, as part of that, that planning study. And so developed a scope around those broad concepts at that point, put that into an application for the planning, uh, planning studies to the state water board. Had some creative approaches there where we actually split the project up into two components so that we would look at the production side of, of the study in terms of the production of recycled water, separate from the use side of recycled water. That allowed the city to, to take advantage of the seventy-five thousand dollar grant twice. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar opportunity by doing that. So that work moved forward, and the study followed the guidelines for the, the, the recycle water funding program. So certain things that you have to follow when you're getting that grant money in terms of how the reports structured, the things that you look at, how you evaluate alternatives, et cetera. So some of the, the outcomes then of that study, one thing that we, we found with that is we did identify kind of a critical mass of the ability to, uh, have users of recycle water in and around the, the city's wastewater treatment plant. That's part of what we started to focus on. So when we did the, the, the big, broad, back-of-the-envelope, a bunch of different partners potential, kind of with this study scope, we focused this in on something that would be more implementable by the city as opposed to a big program that would have a lot of, of, of different moving parts, uh, and, and different partners. Ultimately, could the city develop a project that could support something that had future partners was, was the approach that, that the, uh, city staff, uh, came up with in terms of, of the approach to this, this study here. So again, outcomes of the study, found a critical mass of users close to the city's wastewater treatment plant that were interested and ready to receive recycle water. Historically, that has not necessarily been the case. Some of the early recycle water ag use projects that I've worked on in late nineties, early two thousands, there's a lot of concern about recycle water use in agricultural setting. That's really changed over the past, certainly past ten to fifteen years. So there's a much more acceptability, much more comfort level in terms of the levels of treatment that are available from, from these facilities as well. So found that critical mass of opportunity there with, with growers. Had several meetings and discussions with SSGID, including their board, committees of their board, their staff about their interest in, in recycle water being, becoming part of their overall portfolio. So additional benefit for, um, use of, of recycle water as, uh, in lieu of, in lieu of surface water in, in that case. They showed interest or continue to be interested. But some of the, the permitting regulatory challenges that we would expect to come up when you have even a highly treated water going into irrigation system that, that's subject to a federal permitting and PDS permitting. They're concerned about what that might do with some of their operations. So they were, they were interested but not ready to move forward. And really, I think in the end, the way I'd characterize our discussions was, was that they would like, that they'd be interesting seeing how the city's project moved forward. So if it was successful and you did have successful use of recycle water in an area adjacent to their service area, then that they, they think that there was going to be interest, more interest by SSGID to be, become a future partner. So this process, we, again, thinking big, big picture, kind of, of, uh, whittling down to something more manageable, something that's more implementable is part of what we're doing through these easy, these early studies here. Developed a phased program here that would be implemented in a, a way that would meet the city's initial needs, but then have some room for, for accommodating near-term growth as well. So on the production side, we looked at a number of different ways to modify the city's wastewater treatment plant or your, your actual facilities for treating the wastewater to meet the needs for, um, this type of, of, of effluent use or recycle water use. There are a few drivers there that were kind of paramount and very important. One of those was the need for nitrogen removal. And I'll go into a later slide here. One of the reasons why the nitrogen removal becomes so important is we're proposing to continue to use the city's percolation ponds in terms of the benefit that it provides for retaining capacity for existing users in particular. So we looked at treatment processes that had a robust ability to remove nitrogen. And so that, that focuses, focuses in on certain treatment processes. The city's current treatment process is a very simple, um, simple, tried-and-true process, but a simple process with aerated ponds. But there's limitations on what it, what it can do. And so it doesn't meet the criteria that we have for nitrogen removal. So we had to move away from, from that treatment process. Evaluated alternatives, primarily three alternatives. We looked at, uh, a standard activated sludge type of process. We looked at a, uh, a, a kind of a proprietary type of activated sludge process called a BIOLAC. And then we looked at oxidation ditches. Those are, those are the three, three primary processes we, we evaluated. The, the, um, the BIOLAC process actually came in at a lower, lower cost, estimated cost at that point. But we had concerns about its use and implementation here for the city. Because at that point, the city had as part of its, its actually current aeration system, a very similar aeration system to what that, that BIOLAC process would have. And so there's concerns about it being viable long-term. So in the analysis, and again, working with, with staff at that point, we recommended going to the second lowest alternative, the oxidation ditch because of it being robust, reliable, meeting the objectives for, for treatment quality as well. We have evaluated alternative filtration disinfection approaches, in applying certain criteria to those. And then, as I mentioned, we, we continue to use the existing ponds to the extent we could for both storage and, and disposal. So following, um, following that, that process, the, the completion of the feasibility study, then there's some, some additional steps that were taken. One was preparation of the fifteen percent design. And so we completed that to take the concepts that were developed in the, the planning studies to put them into more concrete, uh, structure and detail and use that as a basis to prepare the environmental documents, use that as a basis to prepare the cost estimates for financial analysis, and then ultimately use that as a basis for scoping then of the detailed design. That was some work that KSN did for, for the city at, at that point, um, with a fifteen percent design. That then allowed then the city to move forward into additional detailed design, went through a competitive process to solicit proposals from design consultants. City selected Brown and Colwell as the design consultant. So that's who's been advancing the, the design since the fifteen percent. It completed the thirty percent and then recently completed the sixty percent design as well that we're reviewing. Other actions that have come off of that, that work as well is the, some of the permit documents. So we've completed the Title Twenty-two Engineering Report that's been submitted to the Division of Drinking Water. We don't have comments back on that yet. And we have the reported waste discharge, which is your permit application document for this change in operation and change in, uh, in management method. That's been prepared. We're holding on to that right now until the project advances a little bit more so that we know that we're going to submit something that's going to reflect what the project was ultimately, ultimately going to be. So we don't want to have that, that go too, too far ahead of, of where the, the final project scope becomes. Through this process, and so you've had some, some additional staff come on. So we've, we've been able to work with your, your current Director Public Works who has also extensive experience in wastewater treatment processes similar to these. So been working with, with your staff to kind of reassess coming off of the fifteen percent design into the thirty and sixty percent design, engaging your staff in, in the, the treatment process review and, and evaluation, taking certainly full advantage of their experience as well. So again, kind of stepping back, and, and this, this slide speaks to some of the, the approaches that we took, both in the planning level and we're taking now in, in the design, the design level. And so these are some, some fundamental principles that we're applying, and we're looking at alternatives, we're looking at facilities details. And one of those is to have processes that are known, that they're, they're well-known to operate and function reliably and that there's experience locally with those systems operations. So I have some other slides here that kind of really show how the project as, as it's designed right now aligns with what a lot of other entities here in the Central Valley and Northern California are, are doing. show how the project as as it's designed right now aligns with what a lot of other entities here in the Central Valley in Northern California are doing. So we wanted to have processes that were robust, know how they're going to they're going to perform. And that you have an ability to have staff, so licensed operator staff that are experienced with those particular processes. That's something also that's that's important to not having some something that's too unique, that you don't have people that are experienced with it. When we looked at facilities, processes and options, we are steering the design towards simpler mechanical systems so that that was would be more readily operated, maintained by city staff. So a good example is the oxidation ditch, you can have aeration provided by blowers and mechanical systems. Those tend to be a little bit more efficient from their kind of how they get the air into the system. But then there's a higher level of of preventative maintenance on those systems. So we opted for a mechanical based aeration for the oxidation ditch process. So we kind of use those those procedures in evaluating what direction to go with with the with the the project process components. We did look at expandability. So under the planning study, we projected a thirty year flow, thirty year population growth wastewater flow at about two point two nine, you know, two point three million gallons per day. But that's that's a thirty year projection. The the cities, if you take the build out of the city's general plan, you may be getting more to four to six million gallons per day ultimate wastewater flow. So we didn't want to design something that that limited you from expanding. So we kept that in mind in terms of how we phased and sized and and cited things on on the existing site. Second last bullet here, again, we maintain the use of the percolation ponds and there's a big benefit to that. If you have recycle water, we don't have an alternative disposal method, then you have to store that water over the winter season. And in this case, as we looked at about the two point, two point three million gallon per day capacity level, that would require about one hundred and fifty five million gallons of seasonal storage. And so that was on the order of, you know, twenty to twenties to to forty million dollars additional costs that that we're avoiding by keeping those those percolation ponds. And then, again, looking at the site, this the city site, citing those so that we could, we could try to make make sure the costs are reasonable. We don't have facilities too separated, far apart. So you have long pipelines and additional costs coming in into those bases. So again, these are some of the the principles that we're applying through through our both the planning and the design process. So I want to touch on the continued need need for for the project or a projects, understand that the city will be looking at some potential alternatives as well. And so some of the things that that are driving a project are capacity, water quality, and then, of course, we have a resource management component as well. So from a capacity perspective, your existing facilities are limited both by treatment and disposal. You have about a one point eight million gallon per day capacity in those existing facilities. And so there's a certain number of of new homes and and businesses that that can accommodate. But if you don't expand, then then that's that's going to be, that's going to be the the limit there. So ultimately, some expansion of capacity does need to occur. And again, in this case here, we did a projection, thirty year projection that flows based on a population expansion up to about two point three million gallons per day. So so incorporated that into into this this project. And the recycle water component in this case does provide for that expanded disposal capacity. So we're dealing with both the treatment capacity expansion and the disposal capacity expansion needs under under this this approach. Second one, water quality. Again, I mentioned that in when we're looking at the alternatives, that nitrogen was a a concern. And so that continues to be a concern. That's a concern from a wastewater management perspective throughout the Central Valley. A lot of the example projects I'm going to show here in the slide or two were initiated to address the nitrogen as part of their their objectives. So we needed to incorporate the nitrogen removal as part of the project so that the percolation ponds could continue to be used. Again, they provide benefit for both cost and and management by not not having to use large amounts of storage for seasonal storage. Overall, we're also seeing that implementation of recycle water use is going to improve groundwater quality overall. We're going to have a broader use of of the treated recycle water over a larger area. It would be replacing groundwater being used for irrigation. Those all have water quality benefits over the their current situation. And then lastly, as I mentioned, again, the the approach where the the initial concepts, looking at the corridor along the Stanislaus River and providing for opportunities for either in lieu ground or recharge or or a different use of of the the groundwater by allowing for recycle water use provides benefit to both Eastern San Juan King groundwater basin as well as the Stanislaus Basin. And they're they're separated separated by the river, but there is a connection between the two. You have the Stanislaus River as a, we call a losing river in this area. So it's one of the major recharge sources in in this in this zone. And so being able to have a some ability to influence the ability of that resource to be available to the city is is what we're trying to trying to accomplish through this. Excuse me. So before I jump into costs, I want to want to talk a little bit about kind of a fundamental concept when we as engineers, when we're either doing planning studies or designs, what we're trying to do when we come up with our cost estimates. Number one, we're not, we're not contractors. Some of us have contracting experience and background, but we we do know how to to develop cost estimates, but we're developing them off of a a slightly different basis than you would for for a construction contractor, because the contractor has the benefit of a very detailed plan set. For us, we're navigating uncertainty with our cost estimates. And what we try to do when we're developing cost estimates, whether or not it's at the planning level or detailed design level, is make sure that we're not too far, either too far low or too far high. We want to try to be somewhere in the middle, maybe a little bit higher than maybe right at the middle, so that when we're we're providing information to a council such as you, that that we're trying to reduce the the likelihood that we're either way high or way low, that you we have good information for there to be some decision making process. So that, you know, that goes into how we develop our cost estimates, but then also how we represent the the certainty or uncertainty in in those as well. And and I just want to give you an example here. This is, this is a project that we had earlier bid earlier this this year where we kind of we hit right where we wanted to be. This is a KSN project. We had a a design. Our cost estimate was twenty two point six million dollars for this project. And and the client had six bidders. And the 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 bid range went from just under twenty one million dollars up to just under twenty four million dollars. So kind of what I'm trying to present here is that our, when we're when we're doing our costume estimates, we're trying to be within this zone here so that you have you have kind of a reasonable level of of basis for your your financial planning. If we were super low on this, then the client would have would have been upset because we would have under under budgeted the the project. Even if we're too high, likewise, it it starts to turn into different decision processes. And well, what can we do if we don't? You know, can we take things out that we otherwise want to be able to come within within budget? So again, I just want to give that as a background in terms of how the cost estimates are developed. In the end, your project, whatever it is, would be designed, would be publicly bid, and you would get hopefully some sort of spread like this. And really through public contract code requirements, you're required to select off of the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So in this case, our client was very happy because we said that this was about a twenty two point six million dollar project, but they got a a bid from a really actually a very good contractor at just under twenty one million dollars. So we're hoping that that's the direction that we're leading this project towards so that there's good information feeding into decisions here. Okay, so now looking at the updated construction costs. We received the updated construction cost from Brown and Caldwell just a couple of weeks ago here. So we're going through it in in detail. We previously had about a hundred and I think it's a hundred and twenty four million dollar construction cost. So that's gone up to a hundred and thirty six point one. So more detail, it's it's gone up. This is also a cost projected to what we call the midpoint of construction. So this assumes the construction is happening starting in twenty twenty nine, occurs in twenty thirty mostly, and then is done by the end of twenty thirty. So this is a projected future cost here. This is, I've given some additional breakdown. I know before in council presentation, they're kind of giving you the the, you know, the base number. So here you can kind of see what the major components are, and I'll just touch on a couple of them here. The, so the secondary process says Ox ditch clarifies Raz west, that's recycle or return and waste activated sludge. So that's that's the biggest portion of the project cost. That's your secondary process. That's what replaces the ponds. And that's what also provides for the nitrogen removal. Going beyond that, then some of the recycle water components, we have the tertiary filtration disinfection. That's your ability to filter and disinfect the water for recycled use. You have this recycle our storage and pumping station. So that's storage and pumping facilities to be able to to receive the water and then and then pump it to to users. So you can kind of see how the how the breakdown of of costs are and the other components that we have integrated into the project here. You can you can see the general breakdown. So again, just wanted to, you know, cover kind of this is a question from this council's perspective of you know, what are other communities doing? What are other communities had to do over the years? And so just I wanted to give a little bit of information of thinking other other systems here in in particularly the Central Valley and and the Central Coast. So, you know, several cities, similar size to to Riverbank have been going through similar processes in in some cases, two thousand nine, twenty ten, et cetera. A lot of these were plants that were pond plants that had to transition into something different, dealing with nitrogen removal or or other other constituents. So some examples here, City Dixon had a twenty fifteen phase where they did an oxidation ditch project. They replaced their ponds with that in twenty twenty fifteen. Right now, they're designing an upgrade to go up to three point three million gallons per day by expanding that oxidation ditch project they did back then. City Gulf had a couple of improvements. They had oxidation ditch before they they provided tertiary filtration in twenty ten to meet their permit requirements. Expanded that oxidation ditch to for provide for additional capacity in in twenty fifteen. And now they're looking at what they need to do next to be able to accommodate their their growth. So kind of similar similar situations here. Again, a lot of these like Atwater and Patterson, those are, well, Patterson's different. They've got three different wastewater treatment plants. There are three, three different processes, but they're going through a process right now to expand their their capacity. Atwater in twenty eleven did in some ways a very similar project to what 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 this project looks like in terms of taking their existing plant and then creating a constructing a new plant kind of remote from from the main part of town. And so that was a project that they implemented in twenty eleven. Last one here is King City in Salinas Valley, very similar to Riverbank where they have a a need to upgrade their facilities, both for capacity and water quality. They are going through a process to design a plant with a capacity of a little bit more than three million gallons per day. And have had to, because of some of the same challenges that we're finding here in terms of funding availability, have had to really resize and reevaluate their their project. And so brought it down to one point five million gallon per day capacity. So they're they're in a very similar situation as as the city's project here in terms of from a comparative perspective. So doing just a bit of a cost comparison, and again, some of these I don't have all the detail, obviously, that I do for for the City Riverbank project, but just be able to do a little bit of a comparison of kind of the components that are comparable that that between the the current one hundred thirty six million dollar project and some of these other other systems. And so you can see with the check marks there, all of them are different. They have slightly different components, just slightly different site, situation, conditions. And then different different cost elements. What I attempted to do here in the bottom with that total cost is try to project those costs back to or up to a twenty thirty basis to be somewhat comparable. But it's in it's in exact. And so those those numbers, you know, not a lot that you can can really conclude on those other than in this case here, I think it what it tells us, particularly with when we look at the say, the the City Dixon project is, you know, maybe there's some opportunity for us to be able to evaluate some of the components and and approaches on on the the Riverbank project to get to to something closer. The King King City project at ninety million is what the estimated cost is right now for their one point five million gallon per day plant, which has some headworks improvement, secondary process, some solids improvements, emergency storage, and then operations and electrical building. So again, that one's that's the most comparable. And it's kind of showing this this cost and price challenge that we're seeing with construction right now, that things are continuing to to increase. So again, we're we're hoping to be able to do what we can within the design process here to to minimize those. And at the bottom, you can kind of see from a comparative basis what the cost per gallon capacity is. So those older projects that were done ten, fifteen years ago or more tend to be lower costs. We're seeing that the costs are increasing. If you at least look at at what the Riverbank project cost looks like compared to at least one other system that's in a similar situation, those are are somewhat on on par.
Neil, cool question. Uh, King City, are they planning to demo their current facility or is this a brand new site?
There, it's it's on their their current facility.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, kind of my my spread there is is a, you know, a little bit inexact. And then that, and it says demo solids. Site in site and piping. So there's a lot of stuff in there. So that's why.
Yeah. So I see it's not checked. So I was like, wait, is it going to be brand new site? Like, what's kind of going on?
They have some demo in there. So I just, I hindsight, maybe should have put a check mark there. But yeah, there's there's some component to it there. For for your project, what's going into that is we do have Pond T three is one of the existing ponds that we are going to use or plan to use for the tertiary filtration. That has some existing solids that need to be removed. So that's a that's a latent cost. I mean, that's a cost of the solids are generated over over years and eventually have to be addressed. And so they've there, those are incorporated into that nineteen million right there. Some limited demo demo for your project is 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 not huge. And the rest of that really in terms of the site and the site piping, the piping, getting the pipes out to the two users included in in that. So it's it's, there's a lot of components that are that are built into that nineteen point nine million. So, okay, so we have the background, you have our approach, approach or processes, what you know, what we've been using in terms of the criteria that we've been been employing for process selection and and design. And of course, we're in the middle of navigating the project detail design, the availability of funding, affordability, all those elements. And as as the council had questions of me last time I presented here is is, you know, is there opportunity for value engineering? And this is really is the right time right now for value engineering, being able to take take an approach to to bring both the project, its costs and scope in line with both affordability and and availability of funds. So first, I want to talk about not just the value engineering, but some some phasing, because phasing, thinking of phasing is slightly different than value engineering. Phasing can be, you 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 plan to have a component, but you're going to put it off. You're going to do it later. So maybe you have lesser lesser capacity. So here's some thoughts on on phasing that we can look at at this phase here as well. First one is to take a look at the scale of the project and just size it to the the current, how does it match the current wastewater treatment plant capacity, one point eight million gallons per day? Both the secondary process and and tertiary recycle water, that that's an option. That scaling could reduce the cost at that's that scale, but it provides for limited ability for the city to accommodate and and respond to to growth at that at that case. So those are, there's, you know, pros and cons to each of these. Phasing could do phasing on the oxidation ditch structures themselves differently have, you know, start off with a single, maybe larger oxidation ditch and then have the the future put off to to later. Again, it it's has an effect on the flexibility of the system operation, but could have a capital cost reduction.
So could phasing the project potentially cost more? So so I know like the Supreme Court is going to be weighing in on the right, the tariffs and stuff like that. So we don't know what the landscape is going to look like, right? But my thinking, just kind of how construction costs have been kind of going up and up and up. So wouldn't you think that maybe phasing the projects, pushing them out further would probably raise the cost up or am I wrong?
They it absolutely does. I think maybe there's there's cases where you could you could structure it, where you minimize that, but and again, in my experience, kind of as a fundamental principle, when I've looked at projects that either been been phased and the components come together, or it's all been done all at once, you definitely see, I mean, it it, you know, if you don't have the phasing, it's a big project, it's a big dollars, you have to deal with that. If you phase it, then maybe it becomes more manageable manageable. But then you do have you know, effect on overall project cost where the first phase, when you're designing, you want to make sure you do what you can so that in later phase doesn't have to go and re replace things, doesn't have to reconstruct things. And so you might have, you know, some stub out pipes. You might have some earthwork that it provides for a new structure to go in. And then the second phase at a at a minimum level, if you have two projects, you have two mobilizations. And that's not insubstantial for a project like this. And mobilization is going to be on the order million or so by itself on this. So yeah, so the phasing has an effect like that. But often you can kind of see from the other cities, they've phased their projects because they're trying to balance what can we do now? What can we afford versus what are the overall increase in costs overall? So it becomes a consideration. Phasing, we could also look at having one clarifier. That's also part of our value engineering process. Looking back at the design engineering folks here in in the in the room, I think none of us like that idea because if you have a single clarifier, it's your single point of of failure. So we can look at that, but it's it's probably not not advisable. We could do reduce the scope of operations building building. Maybe some of the maintenance aspects of that are are deferred or done later. Yes, maybe there's some ways to to reduce some of the initial phase of the cost of the operations building. And lastly, is is a possibility to eliminate the recycle water component altogether. Maybe you have just a secondary process that meets other objectives at the one point eight million gallons per day. But that also has has challenges in terms of the available funding, which I'll go into some of the funding that's tied to recycle water here momentarily. So going into value engineering items, and these are all items that that we worked as a team on to come up with initial list. I think that this list can be expanded. We have an additional member of the team that we're we're going to be proposing as as we go into the the ninety percent design program management. Northern California expert in wastewater facilities, construction and cost estimates can be a critical part of our a very valuable part of our our team in terms of looking at value engineering opportunities. So we've we've brought brought him and onto the team. So some of these these elements here, we'd be we'd be looking at these from a value engineering perspective. Again, eliminate one secondary clarified, not our favorite, but is there a way that we can approach that? Maybe there is. We think that there's some some good savings that we can have on the earthwork in terms of of paving and grading. How the structures are constructed in terms of the the earthwork. So we think that there's some some opportunity there, fairly large opportunity. And that goes into that top line item from the prior list of the nineteen million, potential about four million dollars there of of savings. So we can be evaluating that. Hypochlorite feed system, that's a ejecting chlorine so that your recycle water has given the ability to kind of keep it clean. Not necessary. It's a good, it's advisable item to have as part of your process, but you could live without it and do different things to manage that that situation. So that could be something eliminated. Single headwork screen, the project right now is replacing the existing old screen with a new one and then adding a second one so that it's redundant side by side. This is something that could be again phased or part of value engineering at this point. Site piping modifications, kind of how we approach the structure and the interconnection of of the of the the system components. How are we dealing with some of the storm drain water? We think that there's some potential savings there we'll be looking at as well. Right? So the project is in envisions taking pond T one and turning it into emergency storage. So that's an existing pond that has a liner in it already. So we're taking advantage of that. But there are some improvements that need to happen to that for the the recycle or the emergency overflow. So this would be untreated wastewater go into that from an emergency basis for that to be returned back into the system. We could downsize that. We could put that into a space that we're saving for a future oxidation ditch. You know, so maybe roughly a million dollars saving potential there we can look at. Reducing size of recycled water storage. We could size the storage tank a little bit smaller and have potentially a a good, good deal of savings on that. So we're going to evaluate that, compare that with the operational flexibility that the storage does provide though. Some of the structures we are have designed them at this point to be constructed in reinforced concrete structures. There's potential for those to go into a steel structures, reduction in capital costs. But there's a trade off then for life cycle cost in a lot of those cases where you happen to maintain a steel structure that has a different life cycle condition than a concrete structure. Okay, so moving on from the value engineering and kind of where we are right now with the the financial assistance process. As I reported to the council before, we're continuing to work with the state water board on funding through their programs. And and this process here has been impacted by the state budget. So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth in terms of numbers. There's been ups and downs on that water recycling loan number. I think we're landing on a number now that I I feel is is firm at this point. When we first started talking to state water board staff later part of last year, it was about a thirty five point three million dollar loan that was going to be available through that and through the state financial issues that was pushed down to to very low. And we fought hard to get that back up to a twenty three point three million dollar. We think that the the CWs that's Clean Waters SRF State Revolving Fund Loan at fifty million dollars that we feel pretty confident about that. And that was that's funding that is not tied to the recycle water component of this project. So that could be available if you did go to just a secondary process with that recycle water. Recycle water grant that that has been going, it start off around five million right up to fifteen. We think the fifteen million is still going to be available to the city. What we're getting from the state water board staff, though, is it's more of a question of timing right now that it hasn't been appropriated. So may not be available this year, but we're hoping that it's going to be available next year, next fiscal year. And so that went up from the five million that was identified a couple of years ago now to fifteen. So some uncertainty in that, but we're we're hoping that that comes through here. So that leaves a total of about eighty eight point three million dollars of of relatively firm with the uncertainty of, of course, in the 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 recycle water grant that that we're working with at this point. So working through the details of the funding agreement. And of course, that's something we'll be coming back to to counsel for for your review and in in direction decision. So obviously, there's a big funding gap, the hundred hundred and thirty six versus eighty eight. There's a big difference there. So that's where we're talking about these, these, these gaps need to be filled somehow. And there's a lot of different moving parts and knobs that we can we can turn on those. Talked about the design side, the value engineering side. We're still doing what we can to try and find other other financial resources. So other funding opportunities that we've reported on before, think that council knows that the FEMA brick grant is no longer available. So that that program was essentially canceled here. Now, we do have our EPA WFI alone letter of intent has been drafted. And we've been working with EPA staff on that. Again, there's a there's a timing with that one. And so we want to have the state water board process move forward. And there's a certain point at which the LOI then is appropriate to get into into EPA with a specific request. The we looked at US Bureau Reclamation through their their Title sixteen program where they provide funding, both grant and I think mainly mainly grant funding for projects that have recycle water components to them. We dropped that off a consideration. We had initial study, initial review with with staff, Bureau Reclamation staff on that, but dropped that off because when the brick grant was looking viable, we couldn't tap into two federal sources. So now that the brick brick grant is gone, then that opportunity is brought back up. So we we want to look at that again and see, you know, see if something comes from there. But right now, the reality is the availability of federal fundings for projects is 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 not where it was. New funding opportunities, we had Prop four that was was passed. And then that we're still seeing how the state is going to have that Prop four money available for for different uses. We think that some of that's going to go into the state water board for recycle water projects. But here we want to look at the Department of Water Resources has grant funds that are going to come through to groundwater sustainability entities, agencies to support their groundwater sustainability plan implementation. The city's project, as it's envisioned in in with the recycle water component, is listed in the Eastern San Juan Canyon Groundwater Basin's groundwater sustainability as a as a project. It's an eligible project. So we've already reached out to the groundwater banking authority about pursuing that once the opportunity is is published by DWR. Cal Recycle under SB thirteen eighty three, that's the diversion of organic waste. Not we're going to, we're going to go through the process to see if this is an opportunity here. But there's the potential for some money being available for wastewater entities because the bio solids that come off of the treatment processes and organic waste. And so you're you're having to divert those from landfill application. So can SB, can the Cal Recycle Program provide for some maybe nominal ability to tap into some grant funding? So we're going to look at that. Going back to US Bureau Reclamation, another another program, it's kind of similar to the the Title sixteen is through their Water Smart Drought Resiliency. Again, depending on availability of federal funds and when they come through, this may be one that we could look at, getting some funding to help offset or pay for a portion of the the like the grower connections, the pipelines going to the grower connections there. So that may be something that we build to tap into. So we're going to look at that. And then, you know, other revenue sources really is is do you recommend that the city look at your your wastewater capacity charge? And so updating that to to be commensurate with the the project scale, cost and capacity that's being generated for for new users and and make updates to that so that the new development is is paying their proportionate share of of these facilities. So take a look at that as well. So this is just a quick timeline, kind of wrapping up the slide here. I won't go into too much detail, but again, it kind of shows you the 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 timeframe here, starting in mid twenty fifteen through the concept. Developing that concept into the scope that was part of the the planning, planning application, the planning funding that came through for the initial facilities planning. That resulted in then development of fifteen percent design that set the city up for completing your secret documentation and then your rate study. And you'll have some more financial information, I think, from the next presentation here after after this, kind of where that is. And then leading into the design process with Brown and Caldwell as your your design, design engineer taking that forward. So where we are at this point, we've received the sixty percent design documents. We're reviewing those right now. Be coming back to council here at the September twenty third meeting for for some action items that we'll be asking council direction on. And then from there, depending on on that direction, then moving into the ninety percent, including value engineering. And then again, continuing with the financial investigation, looking for opportunities there. So if this if this process then moves forward, again, we're looking at a at a late twenty twenty eight bidding of the project, a potential construction, then likely twenty twenty nine, twenty through twenty twenty or through two, through twenty thirty, startup and commissioning likely in the twenty thirty one timeframe. So again, kind of, you know, gives you an overview of of the the process for concept, design, and then where the next steps would be here as this moves forward. So if there's any questions, be happy to answer those.
You very much. I understand there's going to be a presentation regarding the funding in addition to this. I know you were kind of getting into that already.
Yes, so the upcoming presentation will be with regards to the financing and the pro forma and how the rates were developed. And then how rates would be affected based on different funding opportunities.
Okay, so I would love to dedicate this time for questions for you because you went in great detail for the history, the status and the future outlook of the project itself. And then we'll address funding questions after for that presentation. Are there any questions from council on that?
Sorry, Neil, this question might be for staff. So seeing as we kind of pass the feasibility, looking for all the other, all the options. Neil kind of touched on it there at the end, the capacity charge. Would that fall under something we could revisit, even though we did a study a few years ago or no?
Yes. There we go. The study we did a few years ago was from twenty eighteen. So definitely different. That was even before the fifteen percent design was completed. So because the scope has changed significantly with regards to those funds, then that would be something that we would explore updating.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
When do you expect the drinking water report to come back? Do you have an idea when the report will come back?
Of the Title twenty three report?
Correct.
I don't have an idea on that. Is that's actually something we haven't been pushing to get the response back on yet. Hasn't been a critical item, but at a certain point we will. We have, right now I have three, I have three Title twenty two engineering reports into the Division Drinking Water Review. And 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 one of them is, so so this one here is, when did we submit that? I think we submitted that in. I think it was May. So I have another one that's been in the Division Drinking Water for almost a year now that just this, I'm not sure what the process is there that is that's taking a long time for that. But it's a certain point where, okay, if we we need to hear back, then we'll start to push on that. But at this point, it hasn't been something we've really been been trying to get response back on yet.
I have a couple of questions. You talked initially about SSG ID and talking with them. Have you retalked to them and shown them your proposed project? Do they have any interest in it now after what you've been able to develop?
So the the last discussion with with them was as we were wrapping up the 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 initial planning study. And so the the approaches there in terms of the treatment process, the potential for integrating with their system, that was part of what we carried forward in in that that planning study. So all that was shared with them. We went through that with with them. And it kind of got, you know, got the answer from them at that point. It's like, yeah, we're interested, but not right now. And so haven't come back and revisited that with with SSG ID again at this point.
Will you be doing that maybe between the sixty and ninety percent to see if that's changed?
Yeah, certainly certainly can. And actually, the staff that I'm working with for the Eastern Groundwater, San Juan Groundwater Banking Authority is the same staff person that we coordinated with there at SSG ID, so.
So you also talked about on one of the slides that the design was originally supposed to be up to six MGD. Why did you decide on two point nine? Why not go a little bit higher anticipating?
So yes, so that the the kind of the back of the envelope concepts, we're we're thinking big. What could this be? What could the needs be? Doing some long range planning or projections of wastewater flows based on city build out. And so those numbers approach around six million gallons. The 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 process that the state water board has in terms of their planning study, they, when they're they're funding projects, they have a limited amount of of future growth that they're willing to fund. And so really the constraint that we found there was they wanted to see a projection within like a twenty five to thirty year basis. And I'm I'm trying to think if they even allow you to go to forty years. I think that they tend to say thirty years is about where we want to see you go. So that's where we, instead of having kind of the 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 big opportunity out there, I mean, we we know that that's out there. If, you know, if if you know, if everything aligns and and down the road, that, you know, the the ability goes that way. But from the state water board's perspective, we were we were constrained by that that thirty year projection. And really what that does, it does put it into a a project scale that is more implementable as well. Because even though you have economies of scale, so a larger plant is going to typically have a kind of a lower unit cost. You still have a much a larger, larger cost that you're you're having to deal with. And so, you know, where does that money come from? Becomes a challenge. So it was reasonable to come back within that constraint that the state water board had for us.
Go back to the slide that you had that showed the different projects at different cities with their cost. Yeah, the table with this one. Okay. So when I look at this one, I find it interesting that recycled water storage and pumping and recycled water connections are not in any of the other cities. And that's one of the components that is significant in cost, like twelve million. Why are they not doing the recycled component? is significant in cost, like twelve million. Why are they not doing the recycled component? Or are they, and it's just written somewhere else?
Yeah, so I'll go from, from left to right here. So, so King City initially planned, had Jack Marks lined up pretty much in line with, with the riverbank components there. And, and I, I'm, and this is not a project that I was directly involved in. I've been talking to one of my colleagues there. And that project, it was, it was definitely in excess. I want to say it was maybe a hundred and fifty million, I think. And they were running into challenges of, of being able to afford that project. So they scaled it back from recycled water with a lot of the components matching up with, with the riverbank project we have lined out here. Coming back down to a smaller capacity and then just dealing with those, those really mostly secondary treatment process components. Dixon, city of Dixon, they, they don't have recycled water as part of their, their process. They have a, what's called a land disposal. So it's, it's a percolation disposal, pond disposal, similar to, to what you have right now is your, your, your disposal process. So, so their, their project really focused on some headworks and secondary process improvements. And that's, that's the direction that they, they went there. Galt. Yeah, so Galt had the tertiary filtration disinfection. They, they also have NPDs discharge and they have, have for years. And so like, like riverbanks, percolation ponds, Gulf had an existing ability to discharge to, to surface water NPDs. And that's actually part of what happened in, in the requirement in two thousand nine for them to have the tertiary filtration is their NPDs discharge required them to upgrade their, their treatment process. But then that also allowed them to use in a slightly different manner the water for recycled use on ag around, around the, the city's wastewater treatment plant. So it had a component to that. And then outwater. Yeah, outwater also had just recycled water production. They did something different on their storage and, and pumping. And, and again, this is a, you know, project, some limiting information I have, but they didn't have that, that cost element in, in their approach.
It seems like the recycled water component does take the cost pretty high. When you come back with your sixty percent, are you, are you going to give us some alternatives? And say, okay, so this is if we go to just tertiary filtration and this is if we go to recycled water. Just like King City, we have limited funds, especially since we've lost all the grant. Is that something that we'll see when you come back?
Yeah, so, so that's where, again, going through the phasing, let me see which direction I need to go here. Yeah, so, so the underphasing and value engineering, kind of there's, there's a, there could be some blurry lines on there. We definitely want to look at these options, alternatives and see what the effect is with, with the cost. And we have a very good cost model. We've got a great team that understands this, the process components, cost implications, et cetera. So we'll be able to come back and say, okay, what might the, what might the scale look like if you downsized with recycled water to one point eight million gallons per day? What might the project look like if you downscaled it or maybe even removed the recycled water component to it? Could be downscaling of the capacity or keep the two point two nine as well. So there's some different options there. And so those, those then can all be part of, of processes that we're evaluating, looking at what, what the, the project costs are compared to both affordability and, and availability to fund the project in the end.
I'm just a comment, I, I look forward to your sixty percent clear drawings, but I'd like to see some alternatives that you present to bring those costs down. Obviously our citizens can't afford a hundred and thirty million dollar project, especially since we've lost so much grant funding. So I'm, I'm hoping to see some components where you give us an opportunity to reduce those costs. Thank you for your presentation today.
If I can just quickly, Neil, as you bring that back though, also add in when we remove like the recycled water element, then we're also going to be out the, like the water loan, like the twenty-three million. And then we won't be eligible for like the grant as well. So just kind of, just to give us all those options. So we're looking at the, the whole thing.
There's, and each of these, I mean, there's pros and cons. And so it's, you know, at one end, you go back to the very beginning of the, the, you know, the big picture, you know, pie in the sky, what could be done? You know, that had no consideration of cost at that point, but that's a place you can start and you can whittle it down to reality. We still have some reality checks here that we, that we can do. And, and, and taking the process components, their benefits, the lifecycle elements, capital costs, what happens with respect to funding availability. And those are all things that we need to, we need to line, line out so that, that there's a, there's a clear picture. If, if you go down this path, does it get what you want? Or does it have a, a drawback? Or at least understand those, because some of those may be things like, okay, we can, we can handle that. We can, we can plan for that in the future and, and, you know, allow this, 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 this council to make some of those decisions.
So just one quick question, when you mentioned conversation around regionalization, where are those conversations now? The very first slide.
If the focus has redirected to an initial project for implementation by, by the city. So, so again, other than having a follow-up with, with SSG ID and on the potential there, we haven't had any further outreach to, to Oakdale. We do know that there's, there's a potential opportunity for, for Escalon. So, so aware of that. We need to have a discussion with them and see if there's an opportunity there with respect to what they're doing. I've done some work for Sylita sanitary district since we started this similar, similar type of study. So their situation, it kind of, one of the things that you, you, you learn, you know, with, with the facilities, like I go to the list of, of, of these facilities here that went through projects, there's, there's always a trigger, there's something, there's a, there's a reason for the project being implemented, whether or not it's an existing system and has limited capacity, limited condition, needs to be replaced or something like that. So what we know right now with, with Sylita sanitary district, they've, they have good facilities that have excess capacity. I think there's a potential long-term for there being some recycled water use there. They've studied that, they're interested in that. But that's, that's pretty far down the road and that's, that's probably a ten-year basis, I think, for them. So I think some of these things where we've, as a team, we've looked at the opportunities for reci, for regionalization. And then we focus on initial phase to, to try to get a, a, a foundation that could be built upon. But would definitely recommend, and you know, if, if the project moves forward this way, to keep those, those doors open, keep the dialogue going. Because ultimately I think that, that the, the foundation of the city could develop here, could, could be part of a, a, a more regional solution. Again, possibly working with, with Escalon. The city of Oakdale system, it's, it's pretty well, it has available capacity, but maybe there's a condition that comes in that, that in the future that might be a benefit for them to be tied into some expanded capacity. So a lot of those things will change over time as well. So while we've, we've diverted, we've, we've haven't taken our, let me put it, our focus hasn't been there. We've been focusing on the implementation of this, this phase project here. Definitely agree that it should not be, you know, left un, unexplored in the future.
Very much. I believe that is it. So we appreciate your presentation and all the hard work you've been doing. We're going to move on to the other presentation, which is you also. Okay. But before we start that, I wanted to clarify for the timeline, this is a question for staff. And I want to thank Vice Mayor Fossey for your working bringing the request for proposal to look at different options. And the council's compromising so that we're able to do so. I do not think we'll be, we'd be ready to see a ninety percent design at this point and make a decision around that. From my understanding, we're going to wait to see some results from the cost feasibility study. Is that correct?
That would be entirely up to council at that point in time.
Okay, so I would love to ask the council for support in having that be kind of our timeline. I would love to see the options first for all the things, including the value engineering and having that discussion. But I do not think we're ready for a discussion or decision around a ninety percent design and any more investment at this point. And we'll talk a little bit more about that with the financing and that conversation that's coming forth.
Someone else will be presenting on that.
I appreciate you. That's me. Seven point three presentation from Bartle and Wells.
Mayor and council, we have Eric Helgason who's joining us online today with Bartle Wells, who will go over the financing component of this project.
Hi there. Good, good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name's Eric Helgason and I'm going to be doing a brief presentation over the rate study that, that we performed in twenty twenty-two and the ongoing updates to the financial projections in support of the, the project.
Eric, if you could give us just a moment where the presentation isn't coming through on our screen quite yet.
Oh, okay. No problem. And well, I guess we'll, we'll, I will say, it's interesting seeing some of those, those projects. Yeah, we, I've also worked with King City and there's, there's a lot of wrinkles, just like with this project. As, as time goes on and trying to get funding sources, I think, you know, with King City, there's also some collaboration, initial thoughts of collaboration with the recycled system with their water provider. They have a, a private water provider. And so it was in the, the early phases. And, and I guess Marissa, will, will you let me know when, should I restart the sharing or is it?
No, I'll let you know as soon as we're able to do that.
All right. Well, I'll just kind of continue to, to talk, talk through some of my points. The so we can complete the study in twenty twenty-two. Just a high level overview of how, of the objectives of the study. We put together the operating costs, the projected capital costs, debt service, existing reserves and current number of customers to project revenues at current levels into the future and to identify the amount of revenue that is needed from rates to support the identif, the needs in the future. So basically the missing puzzle piece is the amount of rate revenue that's, that's needed based on the costs that have been identified.
Your presentation is up now.
Oh, perfect, perfect. All right, yes. So so in twenty twenty-two, we are looking at quite a bit of inflation since the last rate increase, which I believe was in twenty nineteen. Over that time period, there's about a seventeen percent increase in costs. So that was, so just funding operating costs was, was a larger than previously anticipated. And then we also were incorporating the funding of this project. We, when we build these studies, we, we try to be slightly conservative with our projections as far as revenues and expenses to ensure that the, the, they're, try not to err on the, on the low side if, if possible. And, and so the, the, we created these financial plans and, and ultimately the council adopted the rates that were identified as necessary. The, the plans reflected the, the current, we saw our treatment plant assumptions. And, and those have been changing over time. And so we've been helping the city take the adjusted project numbers at, at different stages and, and putting those into our financial model and looking at what the future rate increases will need to be. It's important to note that there's a high degree of uncertainty when, you know, as, as you heard from Neil, there's, you know, the, the funding has changed quite a bit, the timing has changed. And the, the cost assumptions have changed. So as we're modeling this, you know, there's a caveat that, you know, it's a kind of our, our best, best reasonable guess. But right now it looks like increases after the adopted increases of about six percent could support the, the, the larger project. And, you know, with a caveat that, you know, could probably, I would probably assume plus or minus two or three percent on there. But based on the most recent numbers that you updated this last week, that's, that's what it looks like. So looking at the, the assumption, the project assumptions from the previous rate studies to the current study, the, the project was projected to originally be in service in twenty twenty-seven. So it was on a somewhat faster timeline. And that was critical to the rate recommendations because one of the big constraints was debt service coverage. And so actually having the project be pushed out kind of is, is neatly aligned with your twenty thirteen bonds retiring or debt retiring. So that actually helps alleviate some of that pressure. So that's one reason that the rates have been, will be able to absorb this larger cost without increasing, you know, proportionally to the project costs. But in twenty twenty-two, we had a earlier implementation assumption, lower project cost, more only SRF funding, which means lower interest assumptions and, and which in turn mean a lower debt service, projected annual debt service. We also had a lower annual operating cost. So, you know, as the numbers Neil showed, and they've changed slightly since, since I updated my spreadsheet by about a hundred thousand, I think. But the, the new projections have more costs, but also more grant funding. So we, we didn't assume grant funding last time and that, and that we're assuming fifteen million in grant funding. So the overall funding amount that we're looking at is, is a hundred and twenty versus ninety. So that's still a significant thirty million dollars. But you've also had more time to prepare for it and you've been accumulating a bit more cash. So we think you could actually cash fund more than you would have been able to before. So this, this chart compares the actual outcomes from the last rate study to the current outcomes that occurred. The revenues were a bit higher than we originally projected. Where, while the total expenses, especially in twenty-two and twenty-three, that includes operating and capital, were a bit higher as well. However, revenues also help with the debt service coverage, which as I said before, was one of the bigger constraints in the last rate study. So the ending reserves in twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty-five were projected to be eleven point five and they're actually going to be about thirteen point five million. So looking forward, this picture, this chart shows a, a picture of your cash flow for the enterprise. The columns represent the total expenses that are projected for the enterprise. The, the green line is the revenue and the dotted line is the ending reserves. So you're projected to continue to build your reserves until the project comes online. And, and until the project starts, construction begins, sorry, excuse me. And as the project construction occurs in twenty-seven through twenty thirty, you'll spend more on capital. And then, but you'll also be funding the, the rest of it with, with financing. And you'll, and you'll be building, you'll need to have your revenues increase as well. As I said before, the twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one is a nice coincidence because you, you're existing about three hundred and fifty thousand roughly debt from twenty thirteen is fully paid. So you kind of can replace that. I guess the high level look with, with the current numbers at this stage and, you know, as Neil said, they could go down, they could go up. But with six percent increases after this five, it looks like you could support the project. And the original assumption was four and then down to three percent increases. So four percent twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and then three percent after that. So that's replacing that with six percent annual increases and that's with our assumed inflation of So that's replacing that with 6% annual increases, and that's with our assumed inflation of 4%. So that's my brief, brief presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions about previous rate study and our current projections based on the current project costs.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time?
I have a question. Are any of your, in any of your projections, are you including costs for running the plant and getting it up and running for personnel? Is that any, any part of your presentation, or any part of the costs?
Yes, we are. And that is another thing that changed. Originally, we were projecting it would be about $1 million a year to, in operating costs for the plant. And now we're projecting it to be about $2.3 million per year to operate the plant after it's in service.
So that's personnel, that's personnel costs, not just electricity and all that stuff?
I believe it is all, it is the projected, the total projected operating costs for the, for the plant. That's as far, that's my understanding of the number that was passed on.
Okay. If you could confirm that, that would be great, because that seems a little low when you think about personnel costs and electric costs and such.
I will, I will check in, I'll check into that. And I think there might have been some overlap. I think there might be some, you might have some existing personnel that, I'll double-check, but I believe, I, that was the incremental increase number that was with the initial estimate at this current design stage. But I'll confirm that it includes all staff. But I believe, I believe it does.
Thank you. Any other questions about the presentation from council or comments? Thank you very much for your presentation. I do think it's important to add context to this conversation every single time. We, the rate projections that you discussed were with the project being projected at $90 million. So that's what you're presenting. We increased the rates, and that was set to expire for that one for 2027, '28. Now, with the, to reiterate, we're looking at a $136.1 million project. And you're, we're proposing increasing rates again for the next three years at 6% each year. Just personally, when we had this conversation in 2021, I was supportive of the project every step of the way, at 15% design, 30% design. But as we approached 60% design, the financial outlook changed. And this is just the general, the context of it. So we, as discussed, we've lost funding opportunities, and some of the major ones, we redirected to focus on loans. And we have discussed an $88 million loan before interest. And so, I mean, just this, again, I would really ask our council to send Marisol an email so that we can redirect this timeline of approving this 90% design until we look at other options. And just to reiterate, in theory, this project is great, but I want to consider all options before we move forward with even consideration of increasing rates for another three years after '27, '28. And I think that is it for me. Anything else from folks? Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Item?
Public comment, Mayor.
Public comment. Thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, L.A. Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon.
First up, we have Mr. Bill Berryhill.
Council members, good to see you all again. Before I go into what I actually want to talk about, given the water issue here and the sewage, one of the cards that you hold, you should be able to hold in your back pocket, is how much that water is worth that you sell to agriculture. I don't know what that number is, but it's quite a bit. And beyond that, the second leg of that is that it may save your groundwater with a recharge, with surface water. With the recharge, it may save thousands of acres up on the other end of the basin, as you go towards Oakdale and so forth. If you lose three feet a year, three, or three feet consecutive three years, the state will come in and start to manage the groundwater. You don't want that. And so this project would be a big benefit in that respect as well. But what I wanted to do is just come here and invite all of you to, if you would like to, if you have constituents, people that supported you, helped with your campaigns, if they would like to learn more about our project, and come out and actually visually see it, because I think that makes a difference. I know it does for me to be, I'm a visionary learner, and some people are audio. But I just wanted to reach out to you. And if you have some, I mean, anywhere from 1 to 10, but if you, if you want to get them out there, give me a call, and we'll schedule a time. I'm happy to do it, so that people can actually see what we're looking at. They can see the property, and maybe they can see the vision of what this would do for Riverbank. And so just wanted to reach out to you. Let me know. I'm pretty good at tours now. So, anyway, thank you all very much.
Mr. Berryhill? Can you specify what you're referring to, the project?
Oh, the Riverwalk project.
Olivia?
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, council members, city staff, and all our guests here today. I'm Olivia Ramila, broker and owner of Timeless Real Estate here in Riverbank, am a Riverbank resident, and also I am your Director of Community Events for the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce. We do have a lot going on. So before I get started on some of the events we have coming up, I'd like to invite you all to, just going to tell you, for deeper information, refer to the riverbankchamberofcommerce.org. Okay? And that's our website. So first off, tomorrow, here in this room, we have a lunch and learn, and it is Grow Your Business with AI. It's taught by Ashton Fortuna from Valley Tech Logic. And that's going to be from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. He will provide lunch here in this room. So come on out for that. Then we have a multi-chamber mixer that is actually hosted by the Modesto Chamber, but we are having it in Riverbank. And that is going to be at the collective space Thursday, September 11th, the very next day. Come on out to that. It's from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Then on September 24th, the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce has an HR workshop. It's going to be in the evening. It's going to be here in this room from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. They're going to go over workplace compliance, dealing with different things that have to do with owning a business, or even if you work there. So coming out for that. Then we have our big event, which is Bingo Night on September 19th at the Community Center here in Riverbank. It's our first one. Please come on out. Doors open at 5:00 p.m. It'll start at 6:00. It'll probably end around 9:00, 10 o'clock at night. $35 is going to get you a ticket in, and it's going to be your bingo cards. It's going to get you a barbecue meal that has tri-tip chicken salads and green beans. So come on out to that. You can buy those tickets online at riverbankchamberofcommerce.org. Please buy those today. And then also, we have October 8th, going to give you a few events. We have our Senna Sauce Equity Partners is going to be presenting a workshop on how to have businesses to grow or start your business. And that's going to be at the Riverbank Condesitorial Complex, Building 18, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a lunch and learn. Then on October 10th, not stealing thunder, but we do have the Taste of Riverbank, hosted and brought to you by your mayor, Rachel, who we are helping to partner with and through optimism as well. Get your tickets for that. Also, we have the Wine and Cheese Festival the next day, and we want you to stop by your Riverbank Chamber of Commerce booth. We have the, October 14th, we have our meeting regularly from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Riverbank Condesitorial Complex. You are invited. We do have a ribbon cutting on October 15th for Proparazzi Julie at Timeless Real Estate. She's going to do it there. And October 30th, we have a bake sale Halloween costume contest. Location determined 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., and that is up until October. Thank you.
Mr. Fred Walton?
Thank you for giving me a word. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm talking about the Riverwalk project. And I live on Hoag Road in Modesto. And I'm sure that you've just seen the great floods in Texas, where 150 people died, and, you know, most of Mexico City flooded. These things do happen. And these river bottoms were designed by nature for the rivers to flood. My personal opinion on river bottoms, they're not meant to be built on. They're meant for greenbelt. They're meant for farming. They're meant for parks. They're meant for golf courses, athletic fields such as that. Now, the upper piece, that could be well meant for building, if, you know, if Riverbank needs it for the population. But I just want you to take and consider, they say it'll never flood, and then these river bottoms end up flooding with these castor's taffy rain months. Mexico City only took two days of heavy rain to flood that whole city. It was a disaster. So just in consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milt Treewiler?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and community members. Milt Treewiler. I was born in Stanislas County. I've lived here all my life. The prime farmland in the proposed Riverwalk project is a natural resource that cannot be replaced or mitigated because of its unique nature, its quality soils, its water availability, and its good climate. There's no other farmland like it in the country or on earth. The proposed Riverwalk sphere of influence is 2.4 square miles in size. That's larger than the entire city of Houston, and as large as the entire city of Waterford. There's a major shortage of prime farmland and water in the world today. We now know that we need to take out 1 million acres of farmland south of Stanislas County, because there's not enough water to irrigate it. Currently, this land in the project area is being irrigated by private wells and by Modesto Irrigation District water. There's a canal going through the property, and this land can be irrigated by the Modesto Irrigation District water to recharge your Riverbank sub-basin. The city of Riverbank, mayor, council, and residents, we have many things to be concerned about today. We have to be very careful about who we listen to and what we believe. There are people here in Stanislas County and Riverbank who are scheming to destroy the future for our children and descendants. This farmland within the specific plan area is prime farmland plus riparian habitat. The majority of the land in the specific plan area is a flood plain. This flood plain will be necessary to prevent flooding upriver in the River Cove Home Development and downriver during an atmospheric river rain event. Be strong, do the right thing, and save the Riverwalk farmland for our children and descendants. Please do not vote to approve this project. There is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nation for the developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale. There's also the large landmass area west of Patterson Long Interstate 5 and east of Farah Field along Highway 12 to Rio Vista. We all so can build up and not out on our infill areas. We have the entire states of Arizona, Nevada, Utah, New Mexico, and Colorado for the developers to build houses on. Vote no and completely stop this proposed Riverwalk project. There's no other farmland like it in the world. Please do what's best and right for our children and descendants. Vote no when this comes before you. It is our responsibility as parents and adults to provide for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Christie?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Hope you guys are doing well. I come to you tonight to see what we can do to assist public safety, our police department. I've been a resident here since the end of 2006. I'm in Crossroads on Skyler Court. I forgot to give you my address. Sorry, Gabby. If I, if I have the numbers correct here, what I've learned in looking into this, we're currently, we should, our guidelines should be one officer per 1,000 residents. And I believe currently, we're at .80 to .85. So in a town of 25,000 people, that puts us about officers for enough of 21,000. And also, we have to think about officers, you know, they can be called out to assist other agencies anywhere in the county at any given time. So I want to know, you know, as a resident, I want to know what we can do to, you know, get behind Riverbank Police Services, maybe invite them sometime to give them a presentation. Maybe my numbers aren't correct, and, but, and also, the other thing I've learned too throughout this is that recruitment and training for a new officer can be anywhere from three to five years, even if the city council or in the department were to approve a new hire tonight. So lastly, I've been trying to attend these meetings regularly since January, since my good friend was elected to the council. And I haven't heard anybody talk about, you know, increasing public safety, adding an officer, other than my friend, a council member, Call. I haven't heard anybody else, you know, publicly discuss it. I know the last meeting I was here, she asked the council to consider a vote for another officer. So I was just, you know, hoping you can, guys can just come together and think about, you know, if you talk to the residents, it's not political. Public safety is the most important thing. It's not Republican, Democrat, Independent, Libertarian, Green. Public safety is the most important thing. And the next thing, the next issue is cost of living affordability. So if you talk to your constituents, I think you'll find that they're in line with me. So I hope that, again, you'll come together. And like I said, I've only heard council member Call bring up the idea, and I'd like to hear more from the other council members, and maybe a presentation from, you know, Chief Ridenhour, when he has a minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Conrato?
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, Vice Mayor Fassi, Mr. Uribe, Mr. Pimentel, and Ms. Call. Our Riverbank staff and the residents that have taken the time to come out here tonight to the city council meeting. I oppose the proposed, my name is Karen Conrato. I live on Hoag Road. I propose the, I oppose the proposed Riverwalk project. I want you to know that I respect the current and previous planning commissioners and city council members. I believe you have the best intent of Riverbank in your hearts. I want to bring up an impromptu conversation several of us had with Dave Romano after the last planning commission meeting. While I appreciate Mr. Romano's view, I respectfully disagree with the points he made. He let us know that the river bottom land was really just a small area, that farming had become so efficient that the loss of more land would not make any difference in the productivity of the remaining farmland. Based on the whole picture, that information is not accurate. Where accumulated loss makes a difference, and continued agricultural land loss increases that difference. This land is important. This land is actually a huge area of designated world quality and highly productive agrarian river bottom land. I believe it's one of the largest areas in Stanislas County that will be attempted to be parked, paved over. The consistent accumulated loss of agland in Stanislas County and adjoining counties has decimated our orchards, vineyards, and pastures, as many Modesto and Riverbank residents have lamented, commenting on moving to Riverbank because they wanted to live in a small town. We are a group of people that have lived in this area a long time with a history of always seeking out the best for our community. This is an agrarian river bottom with wildlife habitat and corridors that has allowed the wildlife to continue to flourish in this area. We have hawks, coyote, crows, rabbits, skunks, opossums, raccoons, foxes, vultures, fish, ducks, dove, gopher, squirrels, quail, even mountain lion, deer, and eagles, to mention just a few. These animals have been our friends and neighbors, bringing us delight for the 64 years our family has lived on this property. With all due respect, can this developer not find a parcel that will not devastate the wildlife that has sought refuge in this Riverbank? With all due respect, can this developer not find a parcel that will not devastate the wildlife that has sought refuge in this river bottom area? Especially after having been displaced as other developers and projects have encroached upon their habitat. We understand the state is pushing the city of Riverbank to grow. We understand what pressure that puts on the city leadership and also Mister Romano. And we also understand that the consultants and developers can provide an entertaining and glowing review of their projects, overview of their projects. However, we've all read the draft E I R and are aware of the many flaws it is composed of. This is not a case of not in my backyard, the N B. This is a case of longtime residents who have seen wildlife that has taken refuge in this river bottom area. Who have seen the possibility of designated world quality and highly productive ag land paved over, of putting surrounding wells and wells of vital water recharge.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I know you will leave a positive legacy. Um, and I, you have the information and the knowledge and the courage.
Thank you, Ms. Conrada. We have one more on Zoom, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Eggers, can you please unmute?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, give us a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Eggers.
Thank you, Jamie Eggers on McHenry Avenue. Um, I appreciated the prior speaker's comments about police services. That's one of many services that the city provides. Um, all of which have to be evaluated in what's called a municipal services review document. When a city approaches Laughco to increase their sphere of influence boundaries. Riverbank did that in two thousand and sixteen to gain approval of the Crossroads West project. I have reviewed that document. I have also reviewed the draft E I R for the Riverwalk project. And I listened to the consultant's presentation tonight on the wastewater treatment plant expansion. I'm having trouble reconciling all of the numbers and that's the focus of my comments tonight. Specifically, the municipal services review talked about the permitted capacity and understand the difference between permitted capacity and actual or design capacity of something. Um, but it talked about the permitted capacity by the state being seven point nine million gallons per day. And then it went on to say that the uh, build out of the Crossroads West project would create flows of six point six three million gallons per day. That was one of the basis for the approval of the Crossroads West project and the two thousand and sixteen sphere of influence expansion. What's confusing is that the draft E I R for River Bay, or sorry, Riverwalk. Did say that the permitted capacity was seven point nine million gallons per day. However, quote, the actual is closer to approximately one point six million gallons per day. That seems like a big difference to me. Um, into the, the consultant's presentation tonight, he referenced an existing capacity of one point eight million gallons per day. So it's confusing, is it one point six million gallons per day or is it one point eight million gallons per day? And if Crossroads West build out will be six point six three million gallons per day, how is there enough existing capacity? Um, it's just all very confusing and it would be helpful if those numbers could somehow be reconciled. Uh, my last point is that one of the planning commissioners asked a question at the July ninth public meeting regarding Riverwalk. As to whether or not there was enough existing capacity at the wastewater treatment plant for Riverwalk and the consultant said yes. My comment in response to that was there was an entire discussion in the draft E I R for Riverwalk about a shortfall in capacity. Specifically, it was a shortfall of zero point six nine million gallons per day. And it, it also said that the wastewater treatment plant upgrades if built, if built, um, would um, have a first of construction uh, of five to ten years phase that would maybe.
Ms. Eggers, your time is up.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that is all we have for public comment.
Thank you very much. Um, we are going to go to the consent calendar, items nine point one to nine point five. Is there a motion to consider?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero?
Item ten point one, a resolution to consider approval of road abandonment application number zero one dash twenty twenty-five. Old Crawford Road, uh, currently Westgate Drive.
Mayor and Council Joshua Mann, your community development director will provide this report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, let me get my presentation up here. Uh, so. You guys ready? Okay. Um, so the item tonight is a resolution to consider approval of a road abandonment application number zero one dash twenty twenty-five. This is for a segment of Westgate Drive, we kind of refer to as Old Crawford Road now. Um, just a little bit of details on the request. So it's in a full abandonment request or a vacation request of a little over half acre. Um, as I mentioned, it's now referred to as Westgate Drive. And this abandonment will facilitate the future alignment and the intersection of Westgate Drive and Machado Parkway. On that exhibit to the right, if you're not familiar, Machado Parkway currently it begins right at Clarabelle and Wendy's Costco entrance. Eventually there'll be a collector road that will terminate at the um, sports park on Morel. Um, so here's kind of a lay of the land as it currently sits. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out on your left is the current city limit line in yellow. And then we see the F C B and K B home developments that are under construction. So Westgate Drive is the area that's kind of outlined in red would be abandoned. And it'll make a little more sense as I get into my future slides. Um, so I just kind of wanted to hit on how did we get here tonight to uh, this vacation? Um, back, back between in the early two thousands as crossroads, the original crossroads was developing, kind of an issue um, came, came um, that ultimately required, so I've circled kind of the area, the, I'll call it the Crawford Road community in red. So as the uh, crossroads started to develop, uh, the traffic patterns were such that people were using Crawford as a cut through. This obviously impacted that neighborhood. So the, one of the solutions was we went out to Crawford Road. Um, this is looking westbound as you're heading west on Crawford. And some traffic control devices were implemented that prevented a left turn lane onto, or I'm sorry, prevented a through traffic onto Crawford. And only permitted a left turn lane onto Oakdale or a right turn onto Oakdale Road. As the Crossroads West specific plan, as the planning activities, um, I call it the planning phase. Which basically lasted from two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen. The applicant and developer wanted to provide, you know, some consideration to that community for the past issues. As such, I've kind of circled a area where Crawford Road, the decision was made to kind of realign it to limit these potential impacts to that community. Um, and then as part of the Crossroads West specific plan adoption, which was adopted in two thousand and nineteen. Um, a proposed circulation or an amendment to the circulation element of our general plan was proposed. Where it kind of formalized memorialized that realignment of Crawford Road. Um, and then as development started to happen, the Crawford Road was ultimately renamed to Westgate Drive. Um, here I wanted to share, and this comes out of the specific plan document itself, as I was saying, the developer and applicant were kind of thinking about this neighborhood. So one of the things that was put in the specific plan was a conceptual layout of how this area may work. And this provided um, uh, both emergency vehicle access and turnaround for both sides. So if you're going from Crawford and Coffee heading east, you're able to turn around at this dead end. Um, in terms of an abandonment or a vacation, this isn't something that we, we do a lot of. Um, so it's just kind of, I wanted to hit on this, the, the actual process is spelled out in the street and highways code. And that requires a planning commission to make a finding that the proposed vacation or abandonment is consistent with the general plan. Um, so at last month's planning commission meeting, uh, the planning commission did review this and found that the proposed abandonment is consistent with the general plan. One other um, item I wanted to hit on is the um, currently on uh, Crawford or Westgate, there is a public utility easement. That utility easement will not be abandoned as part of this action. It will stay in place. Um, that's partly because there's some existing utilities in there. And also um, there's the ability to use it in the future as the development occurs. But I also wanted to mention, there will be a new utility easement kind of going around the site. Let me go to my next slide here. So this slide kind of captured it all. Um, the, the part of Crawford that would be abandoned is highlighted in red. The future school site is kind of the powder blue. And then the proposed utility and road easement is shown in yellow. And so this just kind of shows how the area will eventually um, build out and develop. And um, as part of this action, we will be recording a public utility easement, generally in the area that's outlined in yellow. Um, in terms of environmental review, this request is a component of a previously proved project, the Crossroads West specific plan. Which was evaluated under an E I R. As such, this uh, action is considered to be exempt from C Q. And as such, uh, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving the road abandonment application number zero one dash twenty twenty-five. This will formally abandon vacate the zero point six four acres of Westgate Drive. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Just a question, I, I do support the abandonment, but could we go to one of the earlier slides where it shows the realignment? Uh, can you go to the, I think it was one of the earlier slides, it's similar to that slide, but showed a, yeah, so this one right there. Go back, that one's good too, right there.
Okay.
Either one. Um, so with the build out of crossroads, kind of inadvertently created a problem for the cross, the Crawford residents there as you had circled in red. Uh, so with this realignment right now, kind of going further north, are we foreseeing the same issue with the residents north of that area?
So let me, let me kind of back up and show you something, um, because I probably didn't hit on this enough. So as you, as you see Crawford Road shown on this exhibit, it kind of goes north and then there's an arrow to the west. So that would be for future um, circulation patterns for development west of this. So we're talking, um, could be fifteen, twenty, even thirty years in the future. As properties develop out towards our ultimate general plan area. That's just providing connectivity um, for, for proper circulation um, for that development.
Okay, is there, is there currently uh, access to a road in that realignment?
No, um, it will basically terminate Crawford would, and Westgate would basically terminate at that yellow circle that would be the intersection of Machado Parkway.
Okay.
Shows up a little better, let me flip to this slide. It shows up a little better of how it actually will function. So right there, as you see to the left, um, where it says drive, the actual word drive. And that would be, and that's the part that mentioned future development towards McHenry Coffee.
Okay, thank you.
You, any other council comments or questions? If not, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open it for public comment. Are there any questions, comments from the public? And we, we do have a couple.
Question with the abandonment, but I'm wondering, I did, what, did want to ask if that, the school site would be considered Riverbank district or Sylvan district? It is Sylvan, okay.
We had another, go ahead.
Um, hi, so I just wanted to say that I did agree with Michael Christie over here about um, looking into the officer to resident ratio. I think it's important to, you know, look at public safety and to make sure that it is something that we definitely expand on a little bit. And if that means adding additional officers, I think it would be something to look into. And I do think it would be worthy spending some city funds to put it towards public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll assume you were referencing some of the potential growth in the area, so I appreciate that comment. Um, and we have one more public comment.
I'm a new resident here for, for uh, F C B homes. And um, my understanding was that Westgate was going to run all the way to Coffee, but obviously it's not. My question is, is there going to be a dead end right there somewhere where people have to turn around and make a U-turn?
Um, I will have Josh come up to answer that. Was that your full question? Though, okay, thank you.
So um, just to clarify, Westgate will not necessarily dead end. Um, the way it's kind of showing on here is Westgate runs west, hits Machado Parkway. Um, whether or not um, you consider that a dead end, I'm not sure. There's going to be a stubbed portion of Westgate. Use the pointer and kind of show. Uh, I don't know if it shows up. Okay. Um, just go a little bit nor, north Norma, um, where it says drive, I just kind of wanted to highlight that. So this area in fact would, would be like, I'd consider calling it a stubb street. Um, but for the most part, Westgate would, for a crossroads west development, would basically terminate in this area. Machado Parkway would be the main north-south collector street. If you're looking at going to, let's say you want to get to Lad and McHenry, you're most likely going to take Westgate to Machado Parkway, to Morel and then on to Coffee and, you know, um, that type of direction. So the only time that this street would go through is future development. So if there's a future development that's west of the city limits, um, Coffee Road area, that's when this um, Westgate Drive would go all the way through.
That's a roundabout, right? That will be a roundabout there at Westgate End.
Um, I think that's one of the options, the specific plan gives uh, different options for intersection controls. I, I don't know that we've narrowed down the design at this point a hundred percent.
Very much. Does anyone else in the public have any comments or questions?
Very briefly, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, Dave Romano, uh, for Crossroads West. We appreciate your consideration of this. We, we had a lot of conversation with the school district about sites and we moved them around to a number of different locations that we liked. They really liked this site in the middle of the neighborhood. They're right in the middle of the neighborhood. And so ultimately, we uh, agreed with them that this was the appropriate location. Josh is our way to go all the way back to the specific plan, land use plan, just so I kind of have that. So when we developed crossroads, the Crawford neighborhood was concerned about traffic. For those of you that have been around here long enough, you remember that little concrete circle in the middle there that kept people from making that left turn onto Crawford? So your general plan actually recognized that. And so Crawford Road is intended to sweep to the north. And if it continues to Coffee Road, it will go behind those residences. So the idea was they will have their access to Crawford Road the way it is today. They'll have that turnaround and then Crawford Road can go all the way through to Coffee as the gentleman mentioned, that is an option. But when that's laid out, it could also curve and go up to Morel. Or you could decide something else. So once you start land planning an area, there's a lot of ways to do it. It might go straight through to Coffee, but you might have some better ideas. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that was the intent by it. But whether it's there, whether it moves further north, whether it terminates, whether it goes up to, to um, Morel, you'll have a lot of options. And then as west, as Machado Parkway goes north and south, at the corner of Morel and Machado Parkway, that's where the future fire station is going to be. So for the people that live in Crossroads West, if there's an emergency, they'll be able to come right down crossroad and service the area. So they've got access to that. So um, with that said, I'm here to answer any questions that we hope you approve this this evening. The school district emails us about every week and says, how's that going? How's that going? They're really excited about getting control of the site. That gives them the ability then to start their land planning that they can't really do with the state until they actually have possession. And the fact that there's a utility easement through there, that's an underground gas line, they're able to put fields over it. So they were more than happy to have a public utility easement. They just didn't want a road between them and what will ultimately be a city park. So we think this is a great solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment or questions regarding this item? All right, any, none online?
No one online, sir, can I get your name for the record?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing, bring it back to council for further comment or consideration.
I make a motion, we approve item ten point one.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, um, debating if we should take a three minute break or power through. What do you think, council? Good. We'll power through. All right. Item eleven point one. So thank you to the youth council for being here. We have a resolution or future potential youth council, a resolution of appointment of eight candidates to the Riverbank Youth Council.
Mayor and council, your city clerk, Gabby Hernandez, will provide this report.
Sorry. Mayor, council, I'm very excited to bring this item for your consideration tonight. After, um, three months from when this got approved to today, um, it's been working hard to, um, get a recruitment and get applicants interested in joining the youth council. Um, I have a little bit of a background and process. That's how we did this. So a little bit of background and purpose, the city council approved the establishment of the Riverbank Youth Council on June tenth to give youth an opportunity to engage in civic leadership and provide input on issues affecting youth in our community. Our recruitment process was held from July twenty eighth to August twenty second. Outreach included social media, uh, city website flyers sent to our schools, both Riverbank Unified School District and Modesto City Schools, um, and community events. We did receive twenty applications, sixteen of which were from Riverbank High School students. Three were from charter homeschools and one was from Enox High School. The interview process, we conducted interviews on Saturday, August thirtieth. The panel included city council reps, community members and city staff. The evaluation was based on leadership potential, communication skills, commitment to service. The top eight scoring candidates were selected by the panel for your consideration. And the members for appointment consideration, which, uh, we have five, let me see, one, two, three, five of them here tonight. Um, Adilene Murgia, who's in our audience, Evelyn Jade Bentoncourt, Summer Mitri, Natalie Garcia, who is not here, Alejandro Jose Cabrera, not here, Eva Maes, not here, Christian Asensio in our audience, and Emily Rose Ramirez, who's here in our audience. So the term and the next steps, the term serve will be from now through May twenty twenty six. We will be holding a no ceremony, should they all be approved tonight. Tomorrow at four thirty in this council chamber, the newly appointed youth council will work on the following items this initial year. They will be working on creating the bylaws, procedures, set meeting dates and times, positions, et cetera. They will receive presentations from city staff on the city departments and the roles and tasks each one handles. They will give a final presentation to city council on what they learned through their term and their experience. And any other interested items, topics will be decided by the youth council on how they want to move forward with those. So for, for considering, for, excuse me, staff recommendation is that city council approve the resolution approving the appointment of these eight candidates to the first Riverbank Youth Council for the term twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six years.
You very much. Um, the, I would love if Councilmember Odiva weighed in on some of the spirit of the interviews and the common themes we heard was uh, young people wanted their voices heard. And so we hope this is a formal way and a tangible way to be able to do that. Um, it broke our hearts that not all twenty were accepted, but we do welcome everybody to be a part of this and sit in the audience uh, with the youth council moving forward to give their input because that is still valuable.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of share, um, one of the main themes that kind of surprised me, uh, aside from their voices being heard is, um, there was a huge interest in, uh, developing, some kind of art projects. I'm very excited to see kind of where this council takes this. Uh, there were definitely some broken hearts there, but maybe there's, uh, me and Rachel were kind of discussing. Maybe there's an option for like alternatives or to, to kind of, you know, be there and help you guys out. So looking forward to seeing where this goes, uh, and the guidance that you guys will provide us, so.
That being said, it's supported by the full council if anyone would like to weigh in as well. Bring it back for consideration.
So, um, we're good?
Or you want public comment? We would love to invite you for public comment. Does the, does anyone in the public have anything, questions or comments? Anything online?
There, there's no one online. We should speak.
Eight. Now I'll bring it back for consideration.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point one.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, we do, would like to present the certificates today for those of you that came, so we would love to memorialize this on the record for a city council meeting. So if I could have the students come up and, uh, the council, we will join them for a photo as well. Yes, let me, let me hand them these so we avoid traffic over here.
She was on the panel.
Yes. Great. Okay, so item eleven point two, uh, Opportunity Stanislaus Memorandum of Understanding Discussion.
Mayor and council, at the request of a majority of the city council, we are bringing forward a review slash discussion regarding the current memorandum of understanding for Opportunity Stanislaus. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for this as it is simply a discussion. Uh, just for some background, um, in December of twenty twenty one, the city council adopted a resolution that approved this MOU between the city and Opportunity Stanislaus for economic development and workforce strategies. And so this new agreement ran through fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, through this current fiscal year that we're in of twenty five, twenty six. Uh, the annual investment that the city makes, um, as part of this agreement is of twenty five thousand dollars per year. So, uh, one of the discussions that has been had is with regards to the services provided uh, by Opportunity Stanislaus. And to share, currently, we have been able to have them assist us, especially at our local redevelopment authority or Riverbank Industrial Complex, as it's currently known, with being able to find tenants, uh, that continued the spirit of looking at green industries um, at that particular site. So just recently, uh, three R, which is the computer recycling company, was one of the companies that they were able to help bring in and facilitate, uh, those tenant leases with. Uh, in addition, and personally, I worked with them during COVID, when we had our small business grant program, uh, where they facilitated a hundred percent of that application process, that review process, and the recommendations that ultimately led the city council to award three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in COVID funding to some of our small businesses that were struggling due to the closures, um, that we were facing at that time. Uh, during that time, they've also provided us with resources through small business development, uh, to be able to offer courses to and workshops to our smaller businesses. Um, as they have, uh, interested topics that they presented to us, um, we've been able to, to facilitate that through them as well. And so tonight, it simply is a discussion with questions. Um, their CEO, uh, Dave White is in the audience and he is available for any questions that you may have specifically to the services provided by Opportunity Stanislaus to the city of Riverbank as part of that relationship and, um, investment that we have in their organization.
You, um, council comments and questions?
I have a lot of questions. Uh, so I'm gonna first talk about the meeting that took place August of twenty twenty three. Um, the first comment was, it was ten years since you had been in council chambers. So to me, I had a lot of questions. Um, and then I'm going to just kind of run through the list of notes that I took from that meeting. And then hopefully you can give us an opportunity to update us on the things that have taken place since that, uh, meeting. Um, so Volt, there was a lot of questions about what Opportunity Stanislaus is doing to actively find students from our area present day, so twenty twenty three to current, I would say. Um, Rising Tides, Career Ready, Work Keys, Best Foot, Best Places, HR Concierge. I know those are all in the MOU. How are we using those currently in the city of Riverbank? What sort of correspondence, I guess, are you getting from staff on that? Um, and then, uh, there was a city request as a whole from the council asking for proactivity. Um, and you admitted it hasn't been the best year for Riverbank when it came to Opportunity Stanislaus. So you're working hard, um, at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. And the question came up, what are you doing outside of finding businesses for that and supporting our local businesses? Um, downtown came up a couple of times, I think, between council members. Um, Volt on the go, that program launched, I think it was brand new at that time. Uh, we've had one presentation in Riverbank since that launched at the Sierra House, and that was fairly recent, if I understand correctly. Um, SBDC, you expressed your interest in wanting to do more workshops. How many have you done since you made that comment? Um, in the policy initiative slide, there was Turlock Irrigation District, Modesto Irrigation District, um, committee talk as CEO roundtable. And then it just kind of seemed like support for Riverbank businesses was just thrown into that slide because it really didn't have a place on that slide. Um, our now mayor stated it was a vague presentation and not a lot of factual information specific to Riverbank. So what do you have to reinforce that? Um, support with the chamber, what sort of support have you provided our chamber? Because that came up. Um, you mentioned Violet. Is Violet still there? I don't know. Um, and then the previous mayor mentioned it was a Modesto centric website. I went on it today. I couldn't agree more. It still sits that way. Um, and then connecting with the superintendent of schools to partner for Volt, what sort of work has been done in that regard? So, does some questions?
Yes, please. There, there is quite a few, so maybe it'll answer some questions for us too. Thank you.
Stacy, I, I think you're referring to my last presentation that I, I, I'd made. I don't, did I say that I had only been here one, one time? I've been here more than one time, uh, you know, in, I've been here twelve years and I've been this council proceedings, uh, I don't know how many times, but certainly more than one. So let me, um, first, my name's Dave White. I'm CEO of Opportunity Stanislaus. I've been here twelve years. We came, I came here in twenty thirteen. We were called the Stanislaus Economic Development and Workforce Alliance. And, um, and since that time, we have, uh, developed into an organization that is very focused on business support. That is our primary focus on supporting the businesses that are here, both large and small, small businesses through the SBDC, large businesses, because they're big employers and they provide a lot of value to our, uh, to our economy. Eighty percent of all new jobs in any economy are produced by local businesses doing well. That's a state of fact. So in regard to actual return on investment, my team put together, um, and I, I'll just cite statistics to you and give you very, um, very concrete evidence of, uh, work that we've done in Riverbank in this past year. We can go back and talk about the whole five years, but in this past year, I'll, I'll start with talent development. So Amber Edwards, who was our VP of Talent Development, put together this, um, information for me. Total hours spent this last year on behalf of, uh, Riverbank employers, particularly a hundred and six hours from our talent development team, which includes, uh, three people. And if that, of that hundred and six hours, nine thousand dollars of ROI attributed to recruitment assistance. Now, the way we measure ROI is, uh, actual retail value that these companies would have to pay if they went out to the market. So, uh, that's how we value. And we, all of our services, most of our services are done for free. And so that's recruitment assistance, nine thousand dollars. HR consulting, five hundred dollars, training and events. Now, these events, uh, we, we move them around and into different venues around the county. And, um, we've had, uh, Riverbank employers attend these events. Companies like Repsco, Three R Technologies, Amedis, um, and several others, um, Silken Containers, um, there's quite a few. So training and events, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Research, a hundred and fifty dollars, total return on investment through talent development, eleven thousand nine hundred. This is that, uh, past year. So on talent development, a number of our programs include Best Foot Forward. They include, um, Rising Tides, which teaches employers and any employer, in fact, how to, uh, what the best practices are for retaining and recruiting talent. And we've had hundreds of people attend that over the years, including, uh, many from Riverbank, Riverbank companies in particular. Uh, just to give you an example of value to a Riverbank company, uh, recently had a, um, we had a meeting with Paul Bennett, who's the CEO of Repsco, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, one of the companies in the RIC. And he is increasing his investment to Opportunity Stances triple by triple because of the value that he's received back and all the support that we've given that company, and they've added multiple jobs. Not only, um, in terms of actual support we give for, uh, job training and other types of, of uses, but we also make referrals for him to other companies. We recently connected him to three large OEMs. Every time they get a sale, that helps the company, that helps Riverbank, because they can maintain their presence here and, and actually increase their, um, employment. In our, uh, Economic Development Department, which is a, a department of one, Monica Flynn, Monica, now, uh, Jimenez Fiedler, uh, research and data provided to Riverbank companies, four thousand dollars. Now, some of that, uh, is done through a, a service called Buxton, which is a psychographic, um, a tool that we use to help predict companies, retailers that are ripe to enter into a market based on rooftops and social economic data. And we've used that, uh, tool multiple times to serve the Crossroads Project and other retailers, um, looking to come into Riverbank. And, uh, and also other data that we use is we have a, a tool called Lightcast, which is an HR, uh, workforce development tool. And it predicts, and we also have a tool that we use called, um, uh, And it predicts, and we also have a tool that we use called, it's called Implan, which predicts, which showcases actual return on investment impact to any type of development. We also produce many research studies for Three R Technologies on workforce, to Repsco on workforce, to Amedis, to Monshine, to, we've worked very closely with Boyet Petroleum, which recently announced the move of their headquarters to Riverbank. They're a major investor in Opportunity Stennisos. We have a very good relationship with them. And then also, business attraction and support. All the work that Monica has done out in the marketplace, working with companies from the Bay Area, working with green technology companies, we assess that value as $18,000. City and stakeholder engagement, $3,000. Return on investment. Marketing and visibility, we've done special spotlights on Riverbank on social media, $8,500 and regional participation, $2,750. We do several projects, we've offered multiple times to cities throughout our county the opportunity to participate in a program called Brew and Build. And this is a program where we bring county and other service providers, and we bring businesses together so the businesses can learn from the providers and also rate things like roads and schools and other services. We would love to do that for Riverbank. We've done one already for the, in the Beard Industrial District in County Proper. We have one coming up in Houston in October. We've made that offer to the City of Riverbank and then that offer is still there to do the Brew and Build. We have another program that we've launched called Opportunity Development. We've offered that to all the cities in the county. We've done one in Turlock. We've done one in Modesto. We offer that to the City of Riverbank as well. As, and what we do in that particular instance is we bring in developers and brokers, especially from the Bay Area, so they can, you can showcase whatever you want. You can showcase the RIC. You showcase your downtown and they get an idea of what opportunities there are for development. So total ROI in regard to economic development this past year, $36,250. From the SBDC, this is a Small Business Development Center. We are the host. German Zabalza is the director. This past year, we've served 32 clients and these clients, when we say clients, these are companies, these are Riverbank employers, small businesses under 500 employment. And we served 32. We helped establish two new business starts in Riverbank this past year. We supported a total of 122 jobs. And then the total funding that was acquired by those companies was $3,143,260 by Riverbank Companies.
Dave, real quick, to clarify, those 50 businesses, do they have access to your services without our agreement? Like, can they just reach out to you directly? Or is this, is this a part of the agreement that they have access to?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is what we do. I mean, this is just our standard operating procedure. We, we provide service to small businesses throughout the county. And when I
I understand, but is, do they have access to you regardless of the agreement here?
Oh, do they have to come through the City of Riverbank to get to us? No, no. This is just our ongoing marketing efforts that we do in order to serve City of Riverbank employers, right? So, but it's reflected in the MOU that we will provide service to those businesses.
I have a couple of questions before you continue.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still going. Can I just, I have a couple more?
Let me ask these real quick.
Okay, sure.
So Repsco and Boyet, they're investors. So regardless of this MOU, you would still be working with them on the projects that they need because they are an investor.
We work with any company in Riverbank. They don't have to be investors.
And then I kind of want to go back to the meeting in 2023. They asked what sort of support, and I know you're giving your SBDC numbers, but what sort of support outside the Riverbanks Industrial Complex has been given? And I'm going to be very forthcoming with you. I own a small business in Riverbank and I've never been called by anybody from SBDC or Opportunity Stennisos. So what support are we giving our small businesses in Riverbank?
Okay, well, in order to receive SBDC report, support, you have to apply for services. That's the way it works for any SBUC throughout the country. And so if, we would love to serve you. The way you do that is you go on the SBDC website. And if you like, I can, I can handhold that to Herman. But you, but you have to apply for services because it's spelled out exactly by the federal government how that's to be done. Because the SBDC is also supported by the Small Business Administration. So any small business that wants services, they have to apply. It's free. Well, we have 39 consultants, including two from Riverbank, by the way, that provide free services, technical business consulting to companies. My wife has a business and she's a, she's a client to SBDC.
But that's my point. How do small businesses get to that point? How do they know about you? How do they know about it if they don't know you exist?
Well, we're in social media quite a bit. And our SBDC is, they make posts all the time on social media. So I mean, I wish we could knock on people's doors, but we, we have a large area to cover. So we try to contact as many businesses as we can through social media. And again, we'd love to serve you and any business in Riverbank. We've, we also would ask those in Riverbank, like the banks, we have several bank partners in the cities to, we have brochures that we can distribute and hand out. So, you know, one, one thing we do know, anything that, I think one thing we are deficient in is we need to work better at communications because we're working very hard and sometimes we don't tell the story as much as we should. So we are hiring a communications manager to that end. That's a project we're working on right now. And we've gotten that feedback from even the ones that, you know, use our services quite a bit. They tell us, you need to tell your story because we have some pretty amazing stories. We have people that go through Volt Institute with no, with absolutely zero experience. And they're coming in making minimum wage. They come out making $30, $40 an hour with benefits. I'll talk about Volt in just a minute. So back to our SBDC. We have the Businesswomen Symposium coming up. We do that each year. And we have several Riverbank participants. In fact, the mayor's going to be there this year. Very excited about that. And the mayor is also on our Board of Directors. We have included her and she attends the meetings and we're very happy about that. In terms of Volt Institute, I wanted to give you some specifics about that. This past year, we currently have, right now, we have five students from Riverbank at Volt. We have three in the industrial maintenance mechanic program, which is a 500-hour program. We have one in the electromechanics. We have one in R, which is the Mechatronics, it's a high-end automation program that we do. These, in the past five years, we've had a total of 30 students come through Volt from Riverbank. And that number is growing and we're excited about that. We have, we did the Volt on the Go at Sierra House, as you mentioned. And one thing that we're offering now for all of our investors, including the cities, is we have, we were able to get a grant to provide Volt on the Go for free to people in the community. So we're in the process of developing sites where we can provide this training. And when I say Volt on the Go training, this is mechanical, electrical, up through hydraulics, through sensor relays, through all the types of training you need to become a maintenance mechanic and to become a controls tech. And so we have PLC training, the whole gamut. And so we're going to be coming and having, we talked to Repsco already. They want to host one there at RIC. We'd be happy to host one right over here. We could do it right in that room, right over there. All we need is a room big enough with tables and access to power. And so we'd love to serve you on that. In fact, we have a partnership, the Riverbank and United School District with Circulus. They're not here anymore, but we did some Volt on the Go with them, Amedis. We've worked with them. We've done a lot of projects with them and obviously Repsco.
Uh, Dave, real quick, the students at Volt, were those students that you guys personally recruited? Like, Opportunity recruited those students directly from Riverbank?
Well, we, I mean, we recruit everywhere and we, we do it through social media. We do it through word of mouth. I don't, I don't know how to carve out just one specific city, except in a word of mouth, it happens locally. Because when we get out and we recruit, we just do it through the normal means of communication. But people from Riverbank hear about it and they take part in the training and
Yeah, so I mean, so my mind, I'm just trying to separate what is word of mouth, what work has been directly from you guys, some of the, some of the examples you're giving is Stennisos 2030. So that's a county project. You guys are advisors on there, I believe. So those are, those are examples you're giving based off a county project, right? And so I think kind of the concern that Stacy was kind of, kind of getting to is we have a planning department. I believe you guys still have some of the, some software that kind of gives you all this information about like the small businesses in town. Like, those would be great ways to kind of reach out and introduce yourself to the businesses. So, so when the council is paying the 25K a year, like, those are the kind of things is, is what we're waiting to hear for, right?
Well, we have a database. We use a database called Active Campaign. It's CRM. We have hundreds and hundreds of companies in there, not all investors. We have many that are not investors. We send out mailings to them all the time. The city gets the same mailings that we send out. We send out to social media. We hashtag the appropriate participants. And I think our message is getting out, at least at Volt. We've seen a tremendous increase in the number of participants over the years. In fact, now we have 120 in the training center. We started Volt on the Go last year. We had, the goal was 200. We served 600 students at Volt on the Go this last year. We do a lot through adult schools. Unfortunately, Riverbank School District doesn't have an adult school. We, I wish they did because that's a really good way to connect with them. So we, we did try to find some entities in Riverbank for Volt on the Go and that's why we did Sierra House. And so we, you know, we're, we're trying to communicate the best we can. If you have ideas on how we can do better, we certainly would do that. But, you know, we, we use the traditional means of communication. We do mailings all the time through Active Campaign. And so we've used Constant Contact. We use all the different marketing tools that most people use.
So what I'm hearing from Stacy and Luis is that they don't see you out there. And one of the things I think of is we, during the summer, and I don't know if it's still going on, we have a Tuesday market and a Saturday market. Is it a possibility for you to have a table there where you can promote Opportunity Stennisos and be part of that? Or part of Day of the Dead or those type of activities within the City of Riverbank so that they can see that you're more out there? Social media is great. I mean, it's a big deal now. But I think what I'm hearing from them is that they're not seeing you out here and that's where they have a concern of where we're spending $25,000 a year and we're not seeing you out there. Sounds great that you're doing a lot of stuff, but I think they just need to see it more than hear it. Does that make sense?
We, we've tried to do events like that and to be honest, when people go to events like that, they're not really there to learn about Volt. We've tried to do those in the past and they just haven't been very effective to get new, new students and new clients. So we've tried that. I mean, we're open to new ideas. One thing that we've done with the City of Oakdale that we're totally open to and it's been very successful is Mayor Share came to us and wanted us to do a job fair, which we've done very successfully with them. So, you know, the partnership goes both ways and we would appreciate ideas. We've worked with the chamber in the past. We've done events here. We've had, we've done events in Riverbank before with a, with a chamber for, through the SBDC. And my understanding, and I'm just repeating what I've heard, is that we didn't have the greatest attendance. So we have to, we have to focus on, on things that are going to provide the best return. And so we're trying to still figure that out with Riverbank. And so I
I have a member of chamber right here that does a lot of training. They hold a lot of classes and I encourage you to, to talk because that will be definitely one way.
Have you spoken with Herman Zabalza?
Let's, let's hold off on the back and forth and if Amber wants to speak, we'll have them speak.
Okay. The other thing that we're offering starting this year is we're giving credit back to all of our investors for use at Volt Institute. And it's 50% of your total investment each year. So what that means is you could take that, for you, it'd be $12,500. You could develop a scholarship fund. You could create scholarships for Riverbank participants to come in and take part in our Volt training. So that would be something we're offering all of our investors. And just as a, we can do that because we have the instructors, we have the training center, things are established and, and we'd be happy to, to offer you that opportunity.
Thank you. Did you have additional questions before I?
Yeah, just more of a comment, but so in the MOU, a lot of the stuff that you're saying that you have the ability to do or that you will do is a lot of the same things that you said in August of 2023. And that's kind of my point is that you've had an opportunity to do events. We just had a career fair with the Riverbank Chamber. So had you reached out to Darlene, who was sitting in this seat two years ago, you would have been able to be in attendance to that career fair. So for me personally, I do not see that the $25,000 investment, and now we're $50,000 and based on the 2023 to 2024 year, 2024 to 2025. So for me, I do not see the benefit in it. It sounds like a lot of the services that you offer, anybody can go to the Volt Institute. It just, there's a fee associated with going. You're not going to say, no, you can't attend because you live in Riverbank. We have a teen center that's completely available and has been for a while now to do Volt on the Go so we could get more than one seminar in place.
Sorry, we can't serve teenagers right now.
But it can host 18 and over.
18 and over.
Yeah, so it's a building. It's a community building that there's access to. There's a community center. We have council chambers. So there's all this space that we could be doing these events and really getting the word out to support our small businesses. So for me, I do not see the benefit in Opportunity Stennisos investment.
So I, so just kind of reading off the agreement here, right? And so Opportunity Stennisos Strategic Plan approved May 24, 2021. And it says specifically, Opportunity Stennisos will, and then it lists 10 items, right? And so number two, we'll continue the local industry program. None of us know what that is. And so, and so how are you guys kind of working on educating us and, and, and providing these services that we're, we're paying for, right? Item four, we'll provide an economic report that just started at the end of last year. And it was probably because of the rumblings from the council. I don't know if that's true.
We submit quarterly reports to you each quarter.
And when did those begin?
Return on investments. Are you not getting those?
No, my question is, when did it begin?
Oh, we've been doing it for years. Are you not getting the quarterly reports?
Okay, so the, there was a report that was received late last year. Those just began late last year. And so these are supposed to be happening, you know, annually.
We send quarterly reports every quarter. We send them to the city and it shares the exact things that we're doing, the ROI that we are submitting. And, you know, our, our expectation is that those reports would be passed on to the city council.
Okay.
So those are the quarterly progress reports, which I think is different from the ongoing market and economic analysis through the Northern San Joaquin Economic Instituteur. So that's listed as a separate item that would be provided to the city.
Well, that, that report you're referring to is the SEDS document that we've done each year that incorporates the City of Riverbanks component or their, their, their contribution to the SED. The SEDS document is a report that's required by EDA, Economic Development Administration, to understand where EDA projects will be approved. And we've run that project for multiple years until last year. And then the county who controls that project, they chose to use an outside vendor that was being used by San Joaquin County and Merced County, so everything was consistent. And so that, that's what that, that's what that refers to.
And then I think the quarterly reports that you're referring to is item 10 on here. And so two different reports still. I guess my question for you would be, what is, what capacity do you have just to continue to support Riverbank if we were to continue with this agreement?
Well, I think I've shared with you about the Volt on the Go. And we're always looking for partners on that. And we would love to do a Volt on the Go, City of Riverbank, but we need a partner to support us wherever we go. We just can't plop our machinery into places where we don't have a partner. So we need a partner. And so we, we have a partner with Repsco. We'd love to, this teen center, that would be a perfect partner for us, but we need, we need a partner. In regard to SBDC, we continue to provide services to small business and we want to continue to do that. And we, if there's a better way to reach a small business than, that would provide ROI that would get us actual clients, then we're all ears. And if Herman were here, he would echo what I'm saying. If it, in regard to Um, if it, uh, in regard to, uh, attracting industry, we're in the East Bay all the time. We're dealing with multiple, uh, clients right now that we've, um, worked with showing them, uh, the Riverbank Industrial Complex, which is really Riverbank's, really the only or the, the major economic development play that there is right now. I mean, it's, we wish there was more shovel-ready land that we could propose, but really the RIC, there's some other industrial land that we've looked at, you know, some of the, around where Monshine is and that area. But, but we, um, but the Riverbank Industrial Complex is really what we're proposing. We, um, have been in contact with some semiconductor companies in Silicon Valley. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm just going to be frank, California is a very tough place to attract business. It's, uh, it's a very difficult place and it's because of regulatory issues. It's because of SEQA and other things. That doesn't stop us from doing what we're doing, but we have to be laser-like in our approach to attract businesses that need to be and want to be in California. And so that's why we're focusing on companies like 3R and, and companies like that. And, um, in fact, uh, we're working closely with Beam Circular. They have a, an economic development person on, on board. And, um, we have a, an East Bay, South Bay prospecting trip planned in the, in the near future. And we'll continue to do those. And so, you know, economic development is, is a team sport. It's, you know, we have to all work together and, and we're, there, there are so many things that we do that maybe they don't have a direct benefit to Riverbank per se, but it's a rising tide lifts all boats type, um, element. Uh, for example, I sit on the board of CALLED, which is the California Local Economic Development, uh, Authority, uh, Association. I'm the chair-elect for that organization. I was put in that place because of my peers' respect for me and my, and my experience. And so I'm not touting myself. I've been doing this, you know, for over thirty-five years. And, um, we do a lot in Sacramento that people don't know about. We just hosted, um, uh, an event with Betty Yee, who's running for governor, to hear her plans for economic development for the state. We're going to be meeting with, uh, Mr. Villagosa, uh, the former mayor of Los Angeles next week. And so we do a lot and trying to improve the business climate, improve the landscape for economic development. One of the things that Betty Yee said, and I hope this is true, but she wants to bring redevelopment back. And so we're trying to do everything we can to support her. Now, if we brought redevelopment back where you had state dollars to do your, your downtown redevelopment projects, that's a game changer. So we're, um, and we have a new campaign that we're coming out with that'll, that's pretty exciting that we want to share with you. Um, so we're, you know, we're, we're working very hard and we wouldn't have the support that we have, especially with these companies, if we were doing a bad job. Uh, we, we have, uh, we've, we've, we took about, when we started, when I came here in 2013, we had thirty companies that were involved with our organization. We now have over a hundred and fifty. We have companies that are giving our organization a lot of money to support what we do for manufacturing. Manufacturing and ag, they are our lifeblood. We need to support them. They provide so many jobs and the kind of jobs that we're training for are going to be the jobs that will not be replaced by AI. That's something we have to really look at because anything repetitive in industry or anything repetitive in any type of is vulnerable to AI. And it's happening right now as we speak. So we have got to be vigilant to make sure that we're training to the jobs that are going to be here in the future. And that's what we do. We train people that are going to be around in manufacturing. And so, um, and so the value of that, what is the value of that to Riverbank? I think it's huge because you have a lot of people who live in Riverbank that work at these companies, like the Wine Group and Gallo and Foster Farms and Chris Crum, all these companies. And those companies do well. Your people who live here, who work there do well. They can go and shop at Costco. They can go and, your local restaurants and they can support, um, your economy. And so what we do is really important. And so, uh, I hope that you stick with us because we want you as a partner. We value Riverbank. I, I shop in Riverbank every week. My wife and I live five minutes from Crossroads. We live in Modesto, but we shop in Riverbank. So we want to support, we, we want to partner with you and we want to find ways to make it better. Uh, but we have a small staff. We have a large area to cover. We have a hundred and fifty companies and people that we have to keep happy. It's not an easy task. I spend a lot of my time with each of these companies. They all expect ROI, every single one of them. And if we don't produce for them and for you, then we have these kind of meetings. So I have to be out there all the time, constantly making sure that we're keeping all these companies happy. And, and that's no easy task. And if we didn't, if we did a bad job, it would be reflected in, our investors would go down. We wouldn't have the support that we have. Uh, I wouldn't be on the board of CALLED. I mean, these are examples that we're doing things pretty darn well in this county. And you look at the economy, when I came here, we had double-digit unemployment. Now, you know, five percent, six percent unemployment. And so the county and the Riverbank, everybody's doing a lot better. What, what is our involvement in that? Well, we have a piece. You know, we're not going to claim everything, but we have a piece in that. And so I would encourage you to continue to, uh, continue on, um, be patient. It's going to come. You're setting up a really good, dynamic, uh, city right now. You've done some really good things with what you've done with Crossroads. And, uh, if I were you, I would be planning for the future. Where's the next industrial development going to be? That doesn't happen overnight and we can't do that, but the cities have to. You have to think about your future, what you're doing. You're talking about new projects and, and we need to have places for companies to go. Because they're not just going to go and take farmland that's, has no infrastructure. There, there needs to be a place for companies to go. And so you have the Riverbank Industrial Complex. That's great. But, um, but we, you know, we're, we're just, we're just trying to do the best we can.
So, so thank you. Thank you for explaining all that. If we could get the data points that you were reading off, uh, we would love a copy of that.
Sure.
Um, uh, so I'll just add that, uh, I don't think, and if I could speak on behalf of the whole council, that we're questioning the expertise and economic development that you have. Because, um, as you mentioned, you invited me to the board this year, um, and we had the meeting in May. Um, it's, it's once a year, board meetings, and I voiced to you, you know, we need more than that. And so I know you're, you're receiving that information.
Uh, you, I, I'll come anytime you want me to come to the board.
And you've been, uh, open about that. So, so as was mentioned, in 2023, you came. We had a, a similar tone in meeting, um, but, but I think, uh, it's, it's worthwhile to be here. Either send a rep that can talk about individual programs or, um, you yourself come. But I know, I know, you know, we're all overextended. So what I'm seeing here is not us questioning the expertise of your economic development.
Cross defensive. I apologize.
No, I just-
Very passionate.
Help me out, yes.
This, and our staff is working very hard. Um, and, you know, uh, the, the, the idea, the rising tide lifts all boats. I think you have to look beyond the, you know, we, we, we understand that we have to give you direct ROI. But there's a lot of good happening to people who live in Riverbank because of the work that we do. I, I can't tell you exactly who that is, but, but they work at companies that we serve. And, and they, yeah, they might be in Oakdale or Modesto or wherever, um, Escalon or, but they're, these are Riverbank people that are getting good jobs and they're being able to spend more money and-
That is, that was my, my next point is, um, I'm not an expert in economic development, but I have a communications background and what I'm seeing is a breakdown in communication over the last five years. Um, and especially with the new council that, that wants a higher level of that or maybe a different level of that. So the data points you brought today are very helpful. I think what we were, that's what we were asking two years ago. Um, and so thank you for bringing that. Um, and so I think as we're looking at this next year, uh, now we have a very active chamber. And so as you said, part of the, uh, onus is on us to communicate as well. So we have a very active chamber. Um, we have the teen center, as was mentioned. Um, and we have council members that are very willing to participate. Um, so I would say this next year, uh, definitely communications. And whether it's, you know, packaged up for us in this report with the data point specific to Riverbank, um, having different programs come in and present to us, um, and in communicating that. I think there's a little bit of, uh, making up to do for, of the communications piece over these last five years for this next year as we consider, you know, what's next. And I, I'm also, as, when I sat in that one board meeting, uh, I was also starting to think if I could communicate to the council that we're almost also an investor like RepSCO is. So it's a very regional approach. But, but again, for a small city like ours, we do want specific data.
I get it. And you, you have a budget and your budget's tight and I, I, I get it. I understand. I, I, I truly do. And I, I know it's, it's hard when you have to make choices about what to do with your money. And, and there are a lot of great, um, causes out there, but economic development is a cause that brings return. And it, it may not be totally apparent to you, um, but over time, I mean, you, you had the foresight, this, this city had the foresight to do the Crossroads project. That's, that's a huge, that's a huge lift, but it's also a great economic driver for you. And so I congratulate you on that. And we've, we've participated in that. We participate with RIC. I mean, we understand these. We're marketing them all the time. And, and sometimes the, the, the projects will land and, you know, we, we worked with Circulus. And, uh, unfortunately they didn't, they didn't survive, but, uh, we work closely with Amedis. I just got word that Amedis just got a $16 million contract, uh, was listed and just came out on social media. So those are good things and, and we'll continue to work our, our very best to try to help you. So, um, I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I hope I didn't come across as defensive. I'm, I'm just passionate. Um, Riverbank means a lot to me because I'm here a lot and I, I like Riverbank. It's a great place. Uh, you have a, you know, you have a lot of potential. So that's all I can say. And we need to do a, and I said, we need to do a better job communicating. It can't be me. I, I'm stretched multiple directions. So we're going to get a person hired. If you know of anybody, um, let me know. We're in the process of hiring someone. But we need to have somebody out there who's, um, you know, building the communications. Thank you. Okay.
Else from council?
We, are we putting anything on the floor? Are we opening for public comment? What, what's next, Jess?
Really, we do take public comment. If there's council that wishes to put something on the floor, that's certainly, um, today was just a review as requested by council with no specific direction. Um, that's being requested nor is staff providing any recommendation.
I think the only thing that is kind of a question, um, Josh, I know that you get some of these reports. I'm curious what the correspondence looks. So you get the automatic reports. What does the correspondence look like from your team? Going back, is there follow-up? What comes out of them? I've seen what these gap reports look like. So I just, I'm curious what your team is doing with the information being provided to you.
Yeah. So, um, the, I think the instance you're referencing that I shared with you had to do with, um, a meeting I had with Monica Finn. And it was more so a, um, I'll call it an exhibit of what they could produce. Um, I don't know that I've had a specific instance yet where a business in town has reached out looking for help or certain data or whatnot. But, um, in any case, yeah, that, that report I shared with you is just more of a, um, you know, an exhibit of what they could produce.
Yeah. Um, so I am going to make a motion to terminate the MOU with, uh, Opportunity Stanislaus.
My question on legal, they sit on the board at this point. Is it okay that I, okay. Thank you.
Put a item on the next agenda to terminate the contract.
Fair. I would like to put it on the agenda for the next, uh, meeting to terminate the contract.
Further discussion, I'll second that.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Um, I will abstain.
Motion passes 401.
You very much. Um, 11.3 city flag design contest guidelines.
Mayor and council, this item is a follow-up to a discussion that we had, um, back in July, uh, 22 or 22nd, um, which was a council referral by council member Uribe with regards to looking at a potential redesign or design of a new flag, um, for the city of Riverbank. Uh, so there's a beautiful little photo there that you see of an informal city flag, which was designed by a pin company. It probably came through as some freebie, um, that we kind of decided to adapt as an informal city flag. Um, it was never adopted by council. It was used, you know, in some of our promotional items. It was used at a formal, former annual conference of the League of California Cities. Um, but beyond that, there was no formal adoption, so it's not flown at any city locations. And so through that discussion, uh, council member Uribe shared that a city flag could assist in enhancing civic pride, cultural representation, economic potential, community connection, legacy and modernization. So with the direction provided by the city council on that, at that meeting, um, we did move forward with designing some contest guidelines, which today we are seeking feedback on from the city council and concurrence, which will allow us to move forward with establishing guidelines, establishing the guidelines, establishing deadlines, and then starting to promote, um, this design contest. So design rules, we want it to keep it simple. We want it to be symbolic to Riverbank that it represents, um, something that's unique to us, whether it's our culture, our history, the landscape or our values. Um, because it is a flag that we want it to be visually impactful, um, we would like them to keep the colors to two to three bold colors. Uh, no text or seals, as that's usually difficult to read. Original artwork only. So of course the use of AI is very much discouraged. Uh, and no more than two entries per resident. We know that residents can get creative, so we will allow for, for at least two entries per resident. Uh, who can enter? Um, open to Riverbank residents ages 10 and over. Um, we do have a lot of younger kids that are very techie and that we feel can probably, um, get very creative at, at their age as well. And how do they submit? Of course, we are looking for a digital or even a hand-drawn design, um, for those younger, um, uh, residents that may not have access to any professional software. There'll be an application that they complete, of course, just so that we can gather some basic information, including an explanation of that design. And then they could drop that off, um, here at City Hall or send it in via email. And then of course we, one of the bragging rights that they'll have if they're selected, um, definitely plays a lot into, um, being able to celebrate that design that's ultimately selected. Um, so we do intend to bring forward, um, those designs to the city council to select some finalists. Uh, some of the feedback that I've gotten through some of the conversations with council is perhaps putting that out to our residents, maybe the top three finalists. We, we get a vote. Um, so of course, the winning design will become our official city flag, um, featured at City Hall during our events and online. Um, finalists will be showcased, of course, in a public play, display or vote. Um, the final design will win a cash prize of $250 and bragging rights for life. Or until there's a new flag, which we hope is not anytime soon, because there will be an investment made, uh, into it. So, uh, we did, um, kind of put together some basic judging criteria that the city council will use to evaluate, um, all of the selections or, or all of the, um, applications that are received. Uh, so of course, including simplicity and impact, symbolism and meaning, city identity, um, some basic flag design principles, and of course, the fact that it should be original artwork. Um, and then just some terms and conditions, which include that parental consent is needed for minors under the age of 18. We will be the ultimate owners of that design and we can reproduce it, modify it or adapt it, um, based on our needs. So with that, the goal is to receive concurrence on just the general contest guidelines. So that as we, um, put out all of our social media and marketing efforts, uh, all of the residents are fully aware of, of- all of the residents are fully aware of, of the guidelines that they need to meet.
Um, any council comments or questions or recommendations on the guidelines themselves?
I definitely want to hear from the rest of the council. Just some, some, two items I would like to add. Thank you for, thank you, Marisol, for kind of bringing that up. As far as when we get to that point of actually deciding, I think it would be a great idea to just put it to a public vote, get those top three and then bring it to council to kind of filter that last winner. And then timeline, I would like to see it 60 days. I think that would be plenty of time to get some thoughts going and, and submissions there. That's the only advice I would give.
I think everything looks great. I, I look forward to seeing what they come up with.
Um, with the, the symbolic to Riverbank, what makes there's a unique culture? I wonder, could we add one page around just some quick facts about Riverbank or demographics? Some of the history points that way, you know, if a 10-year-old's doing it, you know, they have a full scope of what they're looking at. But I, I do appreciate the recommendation about a public poll, even if it's informal on social media.
Definitely, as part of the application and the guidelines will just include some basic facts about Riverbank.
Uh, for the design, is it going to be required that it has city of Riverbank somewhere mentioned so that we don't have to add it in there? Or because if we just have a flag with shapes or rivers, how does that indicate that it belongs to Riverbank? Are we adding that that's a requirement?
Yeah, so we stated no text or seal, so obviously no use of our city seal. Certainly after the fact, we can go back and add kind of a generic city of Riverbank or Riverbank. But I would say we would want the residents to focus more on the design itself rather than the text portion of it, because it doesn't really add any value. Because yeah, like you look at the state of California flag. It says California, so that's can certainly be added after the fact.
Okay, just making sure that it's, they know that we're going to be adding it somewhere so that when people go somewhere, they know it belongs to Riverbank, I guess would be.
Correct, because I think the, the goal with the no text or seals is that you don't focus your design specifically around that text.
Added in the application, you know, Riverbank will be added post, uh, post copy.
Yeah, hence the caveat on the, um, on the other one that the city may reproduce, modify or adapt the winning design.
Anything else from council? Otherwise, we'll move to public comment. Council, any public comment ideas? Yeah, okay.
Good evening and mayor, council, and guests, city. I'm Olivia Ramula, working on our time as Phil State. And I live here in Riverbank. And I just, a couple of things. I just want to make sure that we will make sure we get these flyers or something into all the schools so everybody has a chance here. And I know we're going to have social media, but not everybody's on social media, especially 10-year-olds. I hope they aren't. But, and then I know you didn't want to put the Riverbank sign. Can you go back to that picture by chance and see? So I know you want to put it on there. I mean, you don't want to put it on there, I mean.
Yeah, we're just going to add lettering that says Riverbank, not that specific sign.
Somebody can do something really awesome in those letters, I'm just saying. Just, I don't know, consider maybe early after if you have to, but maybe something inside could be pretty awesome in those letters. Just throwing that out there in case you decide to keep it. I don't know, but just want to make sure all the kids get it. And, you know, everybody else too, not just the kids, but you know, all the schools get it who are here. That's all. Thank you.
The other public comment?
Um, I know it was mentioned getting it out to schools, which I think is a great idea. But I also think, you know, just libraries and, you know, basic public spaces as well. So just, that's all I wanted to add, libraries, so, because, you know, community centers, so.
Yep, thank you. Another public comment? All right. Was it just direction?
Just concurrence from council that the guidelines are fine with some additional modifications, sort of when we do the, the social media and the marketing aspect of, of the program. So we'll go ahead and make those changes and then start to do that.
Thank you. All right, comments and reports, city manager?
So for the members of the public, we've been advised by Sanasos County that as part of the North County Corridor Construction, Roselle Avenue will be closed to through traffic between Clarabelle and Plainview Road starting September 26th. The road closure information will be posted by Sanasos County as this is a county project on their social media pages as well as their project website. So for those who would like to follow along, their website is northcountycorridorphase1, all one word or all one, one sentence, dot com. You can navigate over to their construction webpage to see the latest information. And thank you to our city staff who are now street sweeping our beautiful city. We thank the residents for their patience as we learn the routes and find, find ways to improve the efficiency of this task. With that, we are looking to modify our existing schedule and we'll be running that modified schedule for a few weeks prior to updating and sharing the information to ensure that no further modifications are going to be needed prior or after that. And then the city is currently accepting applications for alternate planning commissioner. There will be a first review of applications on Thursday, October 9th. Those applications are available in person here at City Hall North and online under the Planning Department's website. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Uh, September 16th is the first meeting for the Riverbank Women's Group. It will be at 6:00 PM at Scout Hall and it is a potluck. And Riverbank Historical Society had their first meeting yesterday and they will have their next meeting October 13th at 5:30 at the museum. Thank you.
Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, Mayor. So in light of Hispanic Heritage Month, so this weekend, this Saturday, the Riverbank Sister Cities Subcommittee is going to be hosting our very first Mexican Independence Day fundraiser. We have been working on this for months. I've gained a lot of gray hairs from this. It feels like I'm kind of planning a quinceañera at this point, right? So the, the committee has done amazing work. Please get your tickets. It's on Eventbrite. Please reach out to me. We are close to selling out, but all of the funds that we do raise that night are going to go to awards for our youth. So maybe we can partner with our youth council on that. We're very excited. We hope to, I hope it's a successful night and we hope to do it again next year. So see you guys there. Reach out to me.
You, council member Pimentel?
Thank you, Mayor. As a part of Sister City, I have lost my hair. Lot of long nights. Jessica's House in Modesto is giving tours. They have invited the council through Brianna Guzman. It is for families who are grieving over the death of a loved one. If you are interested, please see me, and that is all I have.
Councilmember Call?
So I have a really short one this time. I know it's surprising. Tomorrow is Sanasos Homeless Alliance Meeting in downtown Modesto at 1010 10th Street at 5:30. We've heard a lot of conversation about the unsheltered in our communities. So I encourage you to go because there's going to be a comprehensive report to our community regarding homelessness. And then I will be giving a public safety presentation on the 23rd of this month. So for those who have had concerns with this and have brought it to me, I want to bring you something in return, so please pay attention to that meeting.
So, um, there was a public comment made earlier, kind of referencing the waste, the basin, the sub-basin, the groundwater sub-basin in some state management that's in line with some conversations going on with the, the basin as a whole. There's, we'll bring more information at the next meeting, but there's conversations going on around the management, which we all share, but of the east side of the basin and the west side of the basin where we are located. I'm paying a little bit of close attention to it because I foresee there may be some implications on increases in rates. We're still moving forward through all of that and I appreciate Public Works for being a consistent member of the Stargba, which it's late. I don't remember what the, what is it? The Sanasos Tuolumne Groundwater Regional Basin. So there's more fourth copy of that. I just want to communicate, start planting the seed and communicate with you all. On this, in the next couple of weeks, we are anticipating some changes in the communication, simply put, that happens between residents, SR911, police and fire. We are closely watching that as well as a contract city and how that may or may not impact us. And so maybe with, when the changes happen or if they do not, whatever happens, if we could have Chief present a little bit on what those changes may be. And then Stan Cog, there, so our interim executive director retired pretty suddenly. So we're now without an executive director at this point. I mentioned I'm on the ad hoc committee for that search. So what we're going to do right now is look at internal candidates and potential external candidates with the consulting firm. Another staff member is also on a six-week leave. So there's work moving forward with Stan Cog as a whole, but also the grand jury conversation, which is, I believe it'll be ongoing for, for quite some time, is also on the move. There is a meeting happening on the 17th next week and it's public for anyone to attend. And I think that is it for me. So we're going to move to closed session. Item 13.1 Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Agency Rhapsody Manager Marisol H. Garcia, Employee Organizations, Riverbank Mid-Management Employee Association. Are there any public comment? I remembered this time. Is there any public comment on this item? All right. None online? All right. That we are going to close, to close session.